Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats. We have a quorum. I am advised by the town clerk that a quorum is present, and I call to order the third and last session of the Fall Town Meeting. The first item of business is changing more vote totals. They only change by one or two, but it's important, since they're recorded, that they be, that we pick up people who've made mistakes, and I'll get to that in a moment. So, the vote totals on the following articles are changed. Article six, the total is 182 in favor, 15 against, and five abstentions. Article 19, the final tally is 146 in favor, 49 opposed, and five abstentions. Both of the votes in Article 22 have changed. The first vote is now, the final vote is 170 in favor, 18 opposed, and 13 abstentions. The second vote, 159 in favor, 26 opposed, and 19 abstentions. And it turns out that most of these missed votes are the result of the following phenomenon. That is, that there are many of you are watching the scroll to see, the scrolled precincts to see how other people have voted, and you get to the end of the voting cycle and try to vote, and it's been 40 seconds. So, I would encourage you to vote, you can change your vote at any time. You can change it 15 times during the 40-second voting period, and I would encourage you to at least get your preliminary vote cast. And if you want to change it before the end, that's fine. But it, this is a persistent issue and involves at least six or eight town meeting members who ought to know better. The, unfortunately, I have a couple of issues about decorum to bring up with you. There was at least one episode last night in which there was some hissing in the audience. Now, I tolerate clapping, because that's at least auditory, but I will not tolerate hissing, and if I had been aware of it or heard it, I would have come down on those who were misbehaving in that particular fashion. This is a, a meeting in which decorum is important, and I expect all of you to uphold the finest in our traditions. Secondly, when you leave, the, the high school is located in the residential district, and there were several neighbors who thought there was a party going on when town meeting ended last night. And maybe there was, but it, it, I don't, I would caution you to keep the noise down as you make your way to your cars, and there's, if you insist upon rejoicing, do it later out loud. Okay. We start this evening with Articles 25 and 26, single debate, two articles. The motion under Article 25 is found at the bottom of Page 25-9, an amendment of the general bylaws dealing with the pay-as-you-throw system. There is a typo, the first of many this evening. In the next-to-the-last line of the motion at the bottom of Page 25-9, the first word should be "they" and not "the." This is moved by Mr. Friedman, seconded by Mr. Spiegel. No motion is being offered under Article 26, so the debate will be focused entirely on Article 25, and I call Mr. Friedman. Mr. Doughty, you can come forward.
Harry Friedman, Precinct 12. What is the function of Town Meeting? Town Meeting is the watchdog of Brookline government, responding, representing the citizens of Brookline and looking out for their needs. What does Town Meeting need to do its job? Basically, it needs information, clear, concise, accurate, and up-to-date information. The town has proposed going to a pay-as-you-throw trash system. Article 25 would require the express approval of Town Meeting before that could happen. Why is this important? Because this is the one municipal service that affects the citizens of Brookline on a constant, consistent basis. People generally don't call the police department every week. They certainly don't call the fire department every week. However, they do have their trash picked up every week, week after week, 52 weeks a year. If the system is being upended in such a way that not only the cost structure, but the physical way in which we dispose of our trash is changing, then the citizens of Brookline have a right to know how this will work, what the costs will be, and how much the savings will be. We do not currently know these things. How much will the toters cost? We have not been told. How will the exception system work for those who ha, who cannot handle or store the toters? We have not been told. What are the current, up-to-date savings, based on current expenses and based on the way the system will be implemented in real life, that is, with a necessary exemption system and a choice of toters, and the administrative costs involved with that? We have not been told. Article 25 would require the town to tell its citizens in Town Meeting the answers to these questions before instituting pay-as-you-throw. What objections have opponents raised to this? Objection number one: This is policy. Town Meeting does not make policy. Well, we made policy two nights ago on plastic bags and tobacco. And in fact, Town Meeting was asked to make policy on pay-as-you-throw in 2009 and the early 1990s, when resolutions actually came before Town Meeting seeking its approval of pay-as-you-throw systems. Objection number two: Town Meeting has already approved pay-as-you-throw. I don't recall doing that. Do you? It died in the early 1990s after Town Meeting withheld favorable action. It came back in a resolution in 2009 and was sent to a moderators' committee. It has yet to come back to Town Meeting. Town Meeting has never had a positive vote on it. It is true that there have been mentions of pay-as-you-throw over the years. If you check Page 79 of the override study committee report in August of 214, you will find a mention. And the Board of Selectmen discussed it before crafting the staff analysis of the operational override in January 2015. And while the fiscal year 2016 financial plan did not mention it under the Highway and Sanitation Department's objectives, there was a mention in the DPW's budget statement under capital that the increase in capital was a result of, among other things, lease payments for automated packer trucks. Yes, the trucks for which we voted. When Town Meeting reviews the budget, the moderator goes through a list of CIP projects so people can discuss them. Things like $50,000 for elevator repairs at the old Lincoln School. But the trucks were never discussed. Why is this? Because they were not in the CIP. They were in the operational budget of the DPW, and that does not get the level, the detailed discussion at Town Meeting that CIP items do. That level of detail that's discussed at Town Meeting is DPW x million dollars. What may look like approval in retrospect was never in reality. If you read the reference documents, all of them, did you piece it together? We shouldn't have to connect the dots. If someone wants Town Meeting to say that they approve pay-as-you-throw, then clearly explain what it is, how it will work, what it will cost, and what the financial implications are. And if you're supplying savings figures, give me current ones, based on how the system will really work, not how it is hoped or supposed it will work years before it even starts, and then allow an up or down vote. That was never done. Objection number three: Pay-as-you-throw has been studied to death. Article 25 does not call for a new study. It's asking for an open discussion at Town Meeting with an up or down vote. Objection number four: Article 25 will delay implementation of pay-as-you-throw. First of all, it was mentioned two nights ago that the start date was already delayed. That's not due to Article 25. Second of all, we were told last spring that if the trucks were not here by October, the program would not start until the spring because the town didn't want to start it over the winter, which made sense. That was not due to Article 25. Town Meeting meets in May. If a resolution backing pay-as-you-throw is introduced and passed, the plan could start then and there. No delays. Objection number five: The petitioner is just opposed to pay-as-you-throw, and this is his, his effort to impair it. Conflict of interest disclosure: I will pay less under pay-as-you-throw. I financially win under pay-as-you-throw. The petitioner would happily support a greener pay-as-you-throw that uses bags. Once someone has purchased a toter, there's absolutely no incentive not to fill the toter every week with trash. The automation was done to save money. The savings figures that were bandied about are based on that. But in the real world, that savings never existed, because an exemption system was always needed for people who cannot handle toters, and the new options for different-sized toters will entail administrative costs that were not factored into the original savings amounts. We end up with the worst of both worlds. A system not as green as it could have been, with less savings than was anticipated. An open discussion at Town Meeting might have led to a much better result. We could have had a greener system without the need of toters, without exceptions, without the administrative costs associated with the toters, without the expensive trucks, and it could have been up and running three years ago. This might have happened had this come before Town Meeting. It didn't, but I don't believe it's too late. Article 25 attempts to do this. It's a reasonable effort to give Town Meeting the necessary information of how pay-as-you-throw will work, how much it will cost, how much it will actually save. This is the type of information our citizens should have, and the type of information Town Meeting members require before voting a major change in the way a basic municipal service is delivered. But we're not voting on the major change in the way a basic municipal service is delivered, and that's the point. A very wise man once said, "Democracy begins right here in this auditorium." What is at issue here is the basic right of Brookline citizens to be able to have a say via their elected Town Meeting members on how this town is run. Please vote in favor of the warrant article.
Thank you, Mr. Washinsky.
Neil Washinsky for the Board of Selectmen. In May, Town Meeting adopted a resolution providing policy guidance to the Board of Selectmen on aspects of the pay-as-you-throw program. I want to assure you that the Board intends to implement the pay-as-you-throw program with an exception system as called for in the resolution. We know how seriously Town Meeting takes resolutions, which is why we work with the petitioner in good faith on resolution language that allows the program to work. This latest article would create another hurdle without giving us the opportunity to respond to last spring's guidance. We're fully committed to concluding the final details of the pay-as-you-throw program through a robust public process. The Board chose not to pursue this process during the summer months for obvious reasons, and the last few months have been dominated by the ninth school process with public hearings, multiple 40B applications with public hearings, and responding to the demands of a 34-article warrant for this, for this special Town Meeting with the need for 34 public hearings. This evening, we can announce that an initial public hearing on pay-as-you-throw is being scheduled for December 13th. We have pursued, pursued pay-as-you-throw in good faith after many years of public discourse. The current plan is a good compromise of the many concerns raised over the years. The pay-as-you-throw program will employ variable-sized wheeled carts ranging from 35 gallons to 95 gallons that a resident could choose depending on their circumstances. The annual fee will be related to the size of the bin, creating financial incentives for residents who recycle more. Trash that cannot fit into the selected bin size can be disposed of by purchasing official overflow plastic bags. The town will all be, will also be scheduling seasonal collection days where residents may dispose of trash and bulky items that do not fit within their bin at no additional cost. As requested by the spring resolution, a waiver system will allow residents with special circumstances related to physical disabilities or barriers on their property to use the overflow bags or a small 18-gallon wheeled container as their primary trash receptacle. The key to making this work is limiting trash to the bin and occasional bags and knowing where the exceptions are, and that is the heart of pay-as-you-throw. Given the need to acquire specialized equipment in advance of pay-as-you-throw implementation, Town Meeting has previously approved funding for the mechanized trash trucks and the trash bins. In addition, the ability to save money through pay-as-you-throw and the mechanized collection of the carts was a fundamental aspect of the town efficiencies component of the 2015 tax override. We anticipate that approval of this article would delay implementation by another year, thereby jeopardizing the contracts for equipment purchases and the budget savings that the overflow, that the override finance plan was built on. We respect Town Meeting's authority to guide the Board of Selectmen in policy matters and to approve the budget. We think that a requirement that Town Meeting approval of the operational details of programs and services is a bad precedent. After this, what's next? A warrant article requiring Town Meeting approval of specific health department operations or specific library operations or specific recreation programs? We believe we can get this right. We'll engage the public. We'll listen. We want this program to work. Please give us the chance to make this program work. The Board of Selectmen respectfully urges you to vote no action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Stanley Spiegel from Precinct 2. Let me begin by explaining what this article is not about. It's not about violating the contract. We, we've already agreed to purchase the trucks. We've already agreed to purchase the toters, or carts as they're more properly called. That's going to happen, because the savings that we will achieve by being able to reduce the labor force and having one driver on a truck instead of having two people were factored into the override plans. That, that is not going away. So, don't be scared or alarmed that we're jeopardizing that. We're not jeopardizing that. The only question is, what form should this collection take? We have to separate the collection of trash, which will be automated, wherever it's possible to have it automated, but how will the billing go? Will we have a pay-as-you-throw program? And if so, what will the pricing structure be? I was on a moderators' committee that met for four years. And by the way, the reason that moderators' committee was, was called for in 2009 by Town Meeting was so that we'd come back to Town Meeting. We didn't, Town Meeting didn't vote a moderators' committee to instruct the selectmen what to do. Town Meeting was faced with a resolution. It didn't know how to proceed, and we sponsored, we called for a moderators' committee so it could come back to us, and then we could have the sort of debate that petitioner is calling for, and that I and the advisory committee by an 18 to 4 vote believes is appropriate. And I will say to you that of the 18 people who voted for it, some are ardent, ardent pay-as-you-throw people, others are more skeptical or more questionable. But all of those 18 at least agreed that this is the stuff that should come to Town Meeting, just as it came to Town Meeting in the early 1990s. It came again in 2009. It was never passed by Town Meeting, otherwise we'd have it already, and every expectation there was back in 2009 that it would return to Town Meeting, and that's what should happen. We are not trying to get rid of, by virtue of this article, the notion of automated pickup, but there are legitimate questions. The pricing scheme, for example, I mentioned I was on that moderators' committee. Our recommendation was for a very modest increment in price. Others wanted a bigger one. Town Meeting should make that sort of decision, not the five wonderful people who work on the sixth floor. And let me tell you why we should do it. Because for all their public hearings, the people who get notified by social media and so on, that pales beside the sort of vetting that things take place once they're on the warrant. Not only does the advisory committee have a subcommittee which reaches out to constituencies who may not even have heard of this, but call them in to get their views on what should happen, but other groups become informed of it too. The Council on Aging, the Commission on Handicap, the, the neighborhood associations. The school community will know about this. The parent groups might want to weigh in. It gets in, into the public discourse in a way that could never happen and will never happen if it's simply a matter of the selectmen holding one or two public hearings. And a fundamental change like this, which Town Meeting has approved of the collection method and basically thinks that some sort of pay-as-you-throw program would be acceptable, but the devil is in the details, and we got to get it right, and having this be passed tonight and requiring the sort of information that petitioner calls for be developed over the course of the spring with many public hearings through, in many, think of the forums that the Brookline Neighborhood Association and the TMMA and the League of Women Voters have. That's what happens when you have a warrant article. That does not happen when the selectmen hold a couple of public hearings. This affects half the town, the town that's going to be on the town service. We need to hear from these people. They are our constituents. In the neighborhoods, they can tell us how they feel, in each of our neighborhoods. That's the sort of input we should have before we embark on this problem, on this, and to help to shape the form that our involvement should be. So, please, don't listen to, I won't call it scare tactics, but it does raise concerns. Are we jeopardizing the program? We are not jeopardizing the program. We will delay it by a month unless we decide it's no damn good. And if we decide, pardon me for that, but if we decide it's no good, then it's just as well that we don't have it. I don't believe that will happen. I believe that the selectmen will put forward a program, it'll go through the normal vetting process, maybe some refinements will be made, maybe some amendments to it will be made, and we'll reach a decision that we can be content reflects the will of the people to the extent that us, as 240-plus Town Meeting members, can ascertain it through the various means open to us. So, I urge people not to view this as an attack on pay-as-you-throw. It is not that. It's not an attack on automated collection. That will happen. It's simply a chance for us as Town Meeting members to fulfill what I believe is our responsibility, get the pulse of the town through the various mechanisms I've outlined. I don't want to keep repeating myself here. I'd like us to move along, but there will be automated collection. There will be a change in town, in the collection of waste and the way we pay for it, most likely, but the details need to be worked out, and it should be worked out through the sort of extensive public process that we're used to here as Town Meeting members. That was our expectation back in 2009, and for whatever reason, the selectmen have not chosen to do what they did in the 1990s, what they did in 2009, that is, bring it to us. And I'm saying, since they won't do it, then we should make it happen by passing this and ensuring that we as Town Meeting members and the public who we represent will have a chance to have our voices heard on this. I strongly urge, regardless of how you feel about pay-as-you-throw, you should understand that democracy really requires us to reach out to our constituents and get, get, get the feeling as to what they want and build a, something that we can all buy into. So, I urge you strongly to please vote for the petitions article. Thank you so very much.
Okay. Mr. Dempsey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm John Dempsey. I'm chair of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Solid Waste Advisory Committee voted unanimously to support the selectmen's vote of no action on Article 25, and I urge you tonight to support that no-action vote. This article would add unnecessary delay in cost to the town's implementation of an enhanced and modernized collection system. Town Meeting already approved funding for the pay-as-you-throw system at the May 2015 Town Meeting. In their reports to the Town Meeting, the Board of Selectmen and the advisory committee were very clear and very specific that pay-as-you-throw was an important policy priority for that fiscal year 2016 budget. Town Meeting concurred, exercised its appropriate authority for appropriations, and funded the purchase of the trucks and carts to move forward. A vote of no action tonight ensures we can continue forward on a program that will address a quarter of a century of inequities, honor financial commitments and contracts, be good for the environment, and maybe save some money. Many years of study and dialogue went into Town Meeting's affirmative vote May of 2015. There were several committees. They've been mentioned. There was the committee formed in 1991 and into 92, 1992. The Board of Selectmen's Committee in 2008 through 2009. The Town Meeting established the moderators' committee in 2009. They've met for four years. To put that in perspective, I don't know how Mr. Franco was able to get the Emerald Island through in what seemed like a couple of weeks. To put it in further perspective, the House Select Committee on Benghazi met for two years. It seemed like 100, but it was only two years. And then finally, the town administrator put together a, a committee to study this pay-as-you-throw proposal. Every one of those committees had Town Meeting representatives in the majority. There were public hearings and forums. Every one of them were attended by Town Meeting members. And at last May's annual Town Meeting, there was much discussion and a vote on recommending an exceptions policy. For what? Exceptions for pay-as-you-throw. It was very clear. It's been vetted. It's been voted. Now, a vote for favorable action tonight would harm the town's standing in several ways. First, it would break promises and understandings that were essential to the override vote. Second, it would cost the town money and credibility, because contracts already signed for the trucks and the carts, based on a good-faith vote of Town Meeting's budget, would have to be renegotiated. Penalties would have to be paid. We would be stuck with the truck. Third, it would create uncertainty in the community. Waiting for another vote in May 2017 would delay the important work of planning for the change, hearing from the constituents, establishing the rates, developing a workable exceptions plan, solving the problems, publicizing the program, and conducting hearings and neighborhood informational meetings. Getting the point? Getting the passion? Here's the precedent. In 2010, the Selectmen, in a bid to modernize, streamline, and stimulate recycling, made single-stream recycling with carts one of its priorities. The commissioner, using some very good contractual negotiations, was able to come up with the money to purchase blue carts. Though some predicted Armageddon, the staff worked with residents, and single-stream recycling was rolled out a few months later with great success. The system works. The checks and balances works. Democracy works. A vote of no action tonight acknowledges the Selectmen's authority to plan and advance timely, modern, enhanced, efficient, and equitable initiatives. And perhaps more importantly, a no-action vote tonight acknowledges Town Meeting's ultimate authority and responsibility to appropriate money or not appropriate money for such initiatives. I urge you to vote no action, and I thank you for your time and attention. I urge you to vote no action, and I thank you for your time and attention.
Mr. Castle. Mr. Castle, are you here?
Thank you. I'm Scott Casell. I'm a Brookline resident, Precinct 13. I'm also the CEO and founder of an organization called the Product Stewardship Institute. We're a national organization that's worked on solid waste issues nationally and internationally. I'm here to urge you to vote no action on Article 25. Twenty-five years ago, I was the principal researcher for the Brookline Solid Waste Advisory Committee on the proposed pay-as-you-throw warrant article that was discussed here in 1992. Our proposal addressed numerous issues over the course of the year. We went through the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. We went through the Moderators Committee, where we got near-unanimous support. We went through the Board of Selectmen, where we got unanimous support. We had numerous public hearings. We refined the proposal numerous times. But unfortunately, at Town Meeting, the article was pulled following comments by two opponents on technical issues, detailed technical issues that were either not fully addressed in the detailed proposal or could not be fully explained in a forum with 240 people. Research on this has convinced me that pay-as-you-throw is one of the best methods to reduce waste, to increase recycling, and to save money for towns. So I took this experience to the state, where I became the Director of Waste Policy and Planning for the Massachusetts Executive Office of Environmental Affairs for seven years through three administrations. The key program for us? Pay-as-you-throw programs. I set up over 130 of them and developed the first guidebook for the state. In my current position with the Product Stewardship Institute, I work with communities all across the United States and Canada, and one of their top programs are pay-as-you-throw programs, and they continue to grow and thrive. Still, Brookline does not have a program. Can you imagine how frustrating this is for myself? It's really, really frustrating. Now, I want to say I fully respect the authority of Town Meeting to make the big decisions. To approve the pay-as-you-throw program, I don't need to say what John has gone over already. It seems to me that this has been done. Now we need our Brookline Public Works Department to iron out the details and get input from residents. Those details are, and I don't say this in a pejorative way, it's simply too complex for an audience of 240 people to figure out every single detail of a system till everyone's satisfied or even a majority. That's what happened back then in 1992, and I don't want to see it happen again. I convene public meetings for a living, and I can design a system for this. It scares me to make every detail decided on by a committee like this. Once a community makes a commitment to pay-as-you-throw concept on the grounds it makes financial sense, is fair, better for the environment, it should ask its paid professionals at the Department of Public Works to work out the details of the system. So in closing, I'm very encouraged that Brookline has finally made a commitment to pay-as-you-throw, and I urge you to vote no on Article 25 so the town can honor its commitments, save money, make the system more equitable, and get on with the details and the discussions with the town that will make this program successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Sharon Schaffman from Precinct 14. I'd like to know if there's precedent for Town Meeting to vote on the details of warrants that have already been passed, such as pricing for services or the details of how something is going to be implemented. Is that something that Town Meeting has voted on in the past?
I'm not quite sure how to answer your question, Ms... and Mr. Waschinsky is equally bewildered. We can't remember any such instance.
It would be helpful in voting if we knew that this was an exceptional request or whether it was something that was a normal course of action.
Well, it sounds as if it's exceptional. Ms. Fraley?
Regina Fraley from Precinct 16. Mr. Dempsey asks, you know, why have all these other things taken such a short time? Maybe because some of us remember that taxes covered, your property taxes covered water sewer delivery and covered your trash. That was historical, and that was in my lifetime, living in this town, and now we pay hundreds of dollars more. That's one reason why some of us are very skeptical about this. This looks like a cash cow to me. Secondly, the very fact that you would sign contracts in advance of this vote, knowing this was coming, proves why we need to do what Stanley says, have a committee to sit down and parse out the details. Three, just to give people, because I didn't hear all of what Harry's speech was, that when I saw the matrix on the board at the Board of Selectmen, and I don't have it with me, but Commissioner Papa Sturgeon can correct me, but it was roughly an 18-gallon would be $185 a year. And you needed to. Eighteen gallons, folks. Eighteen gallons. So you're going to be more than doubling your annual trash fee. I think we need to think very hard about that because we are placing one heck of a burden on people in the light of the overrides coming for the elementary school. Thank you.
Mr. Sandman?
I have two questions, one for Mr. Friedman and the other for Mr. Spiegel. The question for Mr. Friedman is, you've said that you're not intending to delay the implementation of pay-as-you-throw because you're an opponent to the mechanism of using toters. You simply want to bring democracy to the process. If you wanted to bring democracy to the process, why didn't you simply introduce a resolution at this Town Meeting authorizing or perhaps de-authorizing a specific pay-as-you-throw program? Why simply put some -- why put something in that does, in effect, delay the decision?
Mr. Friedman, would you like to respond to that?
I guess I'm not as smart as you, Mr. Sandman, because it really didn't even dawn on me. I put through two warrant articles together. One I have decided not to move because I took the word of the selectmen that they would come up with an exception system in good faith and in good time. So I didn't move that one. In retrospect, perhaps it would have been better to do it your way, and perhaps you might have suggested this to me when we discussed this at the Advisory Committee in May, when I had my toter article.
Thank you. The second question is for Mr. Spiegel, who said, I believe that no contracts would be invalidated and the town would not have to back out of any commitments that it's made if we pass this resolution. And yet, there's been discussion about switching from toters to bags. I wonder if you can explain to me how a vehicle that's been purchased expressly for picking up toters can be adapted for bags?
I'll call on the Commissioner of Public Works to respond to that. Well, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Spiegel.
Thank you. Stanley Spiegel from Precinct 2. When I said that the contracts and the trucks have been delivered and will be used, that's what I meant. I meant nothing other than that, and for you to suggest that I meant otherwise is simply unfair and untrue. If other people decide that they want to go to bags, let them do so. That certainly is not my intent. I speak for an 18-to-four majority on the Advisory Committee, on which you sit. You know that never came up, and for you to raise it now, that's your call. It certainly is not reflective of what went on, either in my mind or at the Advisory Committee.
Now, why don't you two just go outside?
Well, I would -- I would -- I'm not either Vice President Biden or Donald Trump, so I don't engage in fisticuffs, but I would like to hear the Commissioner's response, actually.
And while you're at it, sir, would you respond to Ms. Fraley's statement that the cost of trash pickups would be doubled with pay-as-you-throw?
Andrew Papa Sturgeon, Commissioner of Public Works. The last thing I want to do is be a referee between Stanley and Michael. The automated trucks are what they call side-loaded trucks. If you've seen these trucks that Casella Waste Systems uses for picking up recycling, it's the same truck. It relies on an automated arm on the side of the truck. It has to be used in conjunction with a wheeled cot or some sort of cot. Cannot be used for collection of plastic bags only. So that's the first point.
Thank you.
As to Ms. Fraley's point, while we haven't worked out the final details of the pricing, I will tell you that the pricing for multiple-sized cots was laid out and designed, at least preliminarily, to show a reduction in the average person. For instance, a 35-gallon cot, right now, you pay $200 a year for your trash fee. If you were to choose a 35-gallon cot, the pricing on that would be about $180 a year for that cot. The 18-gallon cot, which will be reserved for special circumstances, is even less than that. It's about $130 for the year. The pricing was such so that we could encourage folks to use smaller cots. If you chose to use a bigger cot, which is, what allows you to dispose of more waste, then yes, of course, the price will increase. For instance, at least preliminarily, the price for a 65-gallon cot right now is priced around $260 a year, which is more than what you currently pay for your $200 trash fee. So the pricing was laid out to encourage the use of smaller cots, which of course is the intent of any pay-as-you-throw system, is to reduce the amount of trash that we dispose of. And we tried to balance it out. The whole premise going forward here was that there would be no net new revenue from the pay-as-you-throw system. The current flat-rate fee for rubbish generates $2.6 billion, which is used to offset about 75% of the operational costs of the division. And going forward, the new pay-as-you-throw system will not generate more than the current revenue.
Thank you, Mr. Olins.
I'm Andy Olins from Precinct 5. I have a question that I think requires maybe a legal opinion. I believe Mr. Dempsey put forward in his presentation that there were specific financial risks to the town based on contracts either in place or agreed to, but maybe not signed. I would like clarification of whether there is a specific financial risk if we do not accept this selectmen's proposal tonight.
Town Council?
Jocelyn Murphy, Town Council. If the town were in breach of contracts, certainly that would pose a risk. Regrettably, I'm not familiar enough with the status of the contracts. Perhaps I could defer to Commissioner Papa Sturgeon about the status of those contracts, but if we were in breach of contracts, certainly that would be a legal risk.
Commissioner?
Right now, we have received authority to purchase the side-loaded trucks. The trucks were ordered, so yes, we have signed a contract with the truck manufacturer to build -- the trucks have to be built, and they have to be outfitted, and they have to be delivered. The trucks right now have been ordered. They have been built. In fact, they've already been delivered into New England. They're having the bodies put on them. So yes, those trucks will be delivered in March, this coming March of 2017. If we were default to default on that, right now, if I had to cancel the order for the trucks, the penalty is on the order of about $20,000 per unit. These trucks are, of course, worth about $300,000 each. The penalty would be about $20,000 that I would have to pay to the truck manufacturer to cancel the order. More importantly, along with the purchase of the trucks, we include in the purchase of the trucks to surplus the old equipment that we're trading in. So we do get a trade-in allowance, one-for-one, for the old pack of trucks that we're no longer going to need. Once the trucks are delivered, if I'm not ready to roll with pay-as-you-throw and I can't use the new trucks in a reasonable amount of time, I do have to turn over the old trucks to the truck vendor, so I lose the use of the old trucks going forward. So there are some technical issues that need to be worked out if this implementation was delayed. As far as the purchase of the toter cots, we have already made a down payment on the purchase of certain-sized cots. We're reserving the final order of the cots until we've determined what everyone wants after a selection of the cot size, so we can't really sign a final agreement on the cots. There is one piece of the pie that you also ought to know about. We have received approval for a DEP grant in the order of about $200,000 that we will receive once we purchase the cots, and that grant is used to defer the cost of any of the cots that are 35 gallons or less. So that offsets a good portion of the cost of the cots, and that is also time-specific.
Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Ross, Precinct 12. First of all, I think I have an answer for the question that was answered earlier, asked earlier about our adopting and debating detailed issues. I'm surprised you don't remember this, Mr. Moderator, but just last night, we adopted a very detailed zoning bylaw, and it took quite a lot of time to do. And we also voted on various details of our leaf blower policy. And you will recall, Mr. Moderator, I don't think Mr. Waschinsky was in Town Meeting at the time, back in the days of rent control, when we -- every Town Meeting, we had a lot of details of the rent control program. In fact, you and I were on the Advisory Committee when we had a total rewrite of the rent control program. So I think Town Meeting can handle details and has done so many times before.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, Marty Rosenthal, Precinct 9, and co-chair of PAX. I was actually going to also address that question. As I look around the room, I'm not spotting anybody who's been in Town Meeting longer than I have, but I would indulge what Joe said with one caveat, however, that there are also many -- and the Diversity Commission is another one that's on our agenda, that's a detailed program. But there's also many times when Town Meeting adopts something and we leave the implementation to the executive branch with either regulations or policies or plans. So I have to say, with all due respect to one of my gurus, Stanley, that I'm not convinced that this is one of those that has to come back to Town Meeting, and PAX has recommended no action. I'd like to have a quick question to either Andy or John. If the moderator would indulge a question that's raised by Andy's comments but is slightly off the subject, but it would require a one-sentence answer, to address the -- one of the great mysteries of the universe to me is how the current recycling combined recycling materials get sorted.
I don't think we're going to get into that, Mr. Rosenthal.
Maybe you can tell me afterwards.
Yeah. It's a smart idea. Mr. Schwartz? Ms. Fraley, you're just going to have to wait until the --
Just a clarification.
I'm sorry. Mr. Schwartz?
I can't hear. Mr. -- oh.
No, you can't.
Then the quick question. Thank you, Chuck.
Wait, 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 wait. Ms. Fraley, please wait until the other people who have not had a chance at the microphone have a chance to ask their questions or make their comments. Mr. Schwartz?
Thank you. Chuck Schwartz, Precinct 9. I just have a couple of questions for the Commissioner. Commissioner, you mentioned that the new trucks will only be -- the side loaders will only be able to pick up the toters. How will the extra bags that will be managed, the bags that are there for people who need more than what can fit in their toters? And also, how will yard waste that's packed in bags or barrels be handled also?
I'll do the last one first. There will be no change to the yard waste program. That's picked up with a conventional packer now. That will continue to be picked up in the same fashion. As far as the pickup of plastic bags, we always figured, we always included as part of the design of this program that in addition to the two side-loaded trucks, that we would also have at least one real load, a conventional truck, to shadow the routes to pick up plastic bags or anything that the side loaders could not pick up. And that includes a lot of the alleyways where we can't fit large packers in currently, and we would continue to pick those up conventionally.
The question's been called, and I will accept that motion. You see, Ms. Fraley? You see Ms. Frauley, Mr. Fisher, Mr. Burstein, and Mr. Vitolo at the microphones with their questions or comments. There'll be -- so on the motion for the question, which will terminate debate, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? The motion carries by a two-thirds vote. On the motion at the -- yes?
We have a recorded vote, please.
If you want a recorded vote, we'll have one. Those who wish a recorded vote, please stand. This is Article 25, main motion. We will have a recorded vote. Yes, the motion is at the bottom of Page 25-9. It's the motion of Mr. Friedman that was supported by Mr. Spiegel. And you can start voting right now. Vote early and often, but not late. Thirty-seven in favor, 146 opposed, and nine abstentions. And now that action's been taken on this article, I'll respond very briefly to Mr. Rosenthal, who accused me of not understanding what we did last night. Of course, we dealt with a very complex issue. Zoning is always complex, and there are many of us who believe that there's a major difference between town meetings dealing with its statutory requirement to pass on complicated zoning issues and town meetings getting involved in the details of a program such as this, which is often the province of the executive. Article 27. The motion under Article 27, which is a naming article, is on Page 27-5. Moved by Ms. Humphrey, seconded by Ms. Heller. Ms. Humphrey?
Thank you. Sitska Humphrey, Precinct 6, speaking on behalf of the advisory committee. I don't know if Donna Wolf, who is Walter Brookings' granddaughter, if she is here, but if she is, I really would like her to know how very honored I am to present warrant Article 27. I'm standing here before you because 72 years ago, people like Lieutenant Brookings gave their lives to stop a war and save the lives of so many citizens in the European theater. That time was a very scary and stressful time for many citizens, just as war is now for many around the world. Bombed-out cities, starving families, poor housing, if there is one, no heat, very hard. After the war, many citizens from the United States again helped. They collected funds to ship food, including the very first oranges that my siblings ever saw and thought they were balls. We have wonderful photographs of that. As my city that I was born in was being rebuilt, we had lots of Marshall Streets, Marshall Plaza, Marshall Park. All of this because of the heroic actions of so many young people like Walter Brookings. Walter lived right down the street at 126 Cypress Street, which doesn't exist there anymore. He attended and graduated this high school, and I am sure that he probably must have been in this very same auditorium that we are in. At age 22, Mr. Brookings enlisted in the Air Force, and he began active duty on May 18, 1942. He was a second lieutenant in the U.S. Army Air Forces in the 545 Bomber Squadron. He was a copilot of a B-17 bomber, which was named Lovell's Havel after the pilot James McNauton Havel, a graduate from Phillips Exeter Academy, and he was around the same age as Mr. Brookings. Mr. Brookings died in service over France on March 19, 1944. He was only 24 when his plane was shot down. The pilots, he and Mr. Havel, were able to keep the plane going long enough to enable four soldiers to exist, and they were taken prisoners of war, and one was hospitalized. The pilots and three additional crew members died in the crash. Lieutenant Brookings left behind his wife. He left behind his two-year-old son, who had never met his father, and we now know that he also has a granddaughter, who brought all of the heroic actions of her grandfather to our attention. The advisory committee voted unanimously to support this article.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Neil Gordon, Precinct 1, town meeting member. I'm also a member and a trustee of the Brookline Veterans of Foreign Wars. Stephen F. Rutledge opposed, and if it's okay with you, I'll speak briefly. On Article 27 honors Lieutenant Walter F. Brookings, a Brookline hero killed in action over France in World War II. Before we vote, take a moment to think of what our world might be like, what Brookline might be like, but for the service and sacrifice of Walter Brookings and those like him. I'm pleased to report that both the Brookline VFW and the Brookline American Legion Post 11 endorse this article. Please vote favorable action on Article 27. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heller.
Nancy Heller for unanimous Board of Selectmen, in urging you to vote favorable action. And this is a particularly meaningful time to dedicate this square to Lieutenant Brookings, who sacrificed his life in World War II. We have another very notable veteran of World War II, who luckily did not sacrifice his life, but went on to become commander in chief, and that's JFK. His birthday is on May 29, 2017, his 100th birthday. So it's a very special time for Brookline, the national -- the town. We're working with the National Park Service, with Veterans Director, and with others to plan events, which will honor JFK. The Memorial Day Parade will honor him, and I understand that the Veterans Director would also like to dedicate the plaque to Lieutenant Brookings at that same time. So it is an important time. It's an important symbol to dedicate this to Lieutenant Brookings. And as I say, the Board of Selectmen unanimously supports this article. Thank you.
On the motion on Page 27-5, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. I'm going to have to ask your indulgence because the -- there is a change, a significant change in the motion that is not in writing before you. But I think we've got a lot of brain power in here, and I think you will understand the nature of the change. So the motion under Article 28 is -- starts in 28-22 and goes over to Page 28-40. It's moved by Ms. Daley and seconded by Mr. Liao. And please turn to Page 37, 28-37. And owing to a, what I'll call a Scrivener's error in the write-up of the selectman's motion, which is what's before you, a paragraph or a sentence that was approved by the advisory committee was deleted from the selectman's version inadvertently. That sentence is the first sentence of Section 5.5.7A at the top of Page 28-37, reading, "Whenever the commission receives a complaint, et cetera," through to the end of that sentence with the commission's assistance. That sentence should be relocated to the next page. So please turn to Page 28-38, and that sentence would be inserted after subparaphrase A. So it becomes subparaphrase B, and accordingly, the current paragraph labeled paragraph B would be changed to paragraph C. Is there anyone here that doesn't understand what's happening here? Okay, good. So it's -- the motion is, as I say, moved by Ms. Daley, and I call on her to explain it.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Nancy Daley for the Board of Selectmen. A few years ago, we rewrote the bylaw for what was then the Human Relations Commission and what is now the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. The main objectives of this warrant article is to clean up the language in Article 3.14, which governs the commission, to update Article 5.5, the Fair Housing Bylaw, and to bring a reference to the commission in Article 10.2 concerning enforcement of the Fair Housing Bylaw in line with the other articles. We did have -- I believe we're all on the same page now. We did have some differing language earlier as to exactly how the reappointments were going to be made. But in a year like -- we were concerned with the original language because in a year like this, where the Board has had long extra meetings to deal with the ninth elementary school issue and the extensive warrant for town meeting, and we are admittedly behind on reappointments. And we didn't want to have the commission suddenly lose a bunch of members automatically because the time was up. Typically, the rule is that people stay on until we do the reappointments. So we've come to sort of a compromise measure. So now, a member whose term is up and who doesn't reapply would be off the commission as of August 31. A member who submitted a renewal application would be extended until the Board of Selectmen acted on the application. And I also want to say a word about -- there was some language in the advisory committee write-up about the diversity commission's powers to investigate and essentially try cases in relation to the fair housing law. And this was removed from the bylaw when we rewrote it a few years ago. This was not an attempt to undermine the commission in any way. The commission, for many, many years, had not been investigating and trying cases like that. And in fact, I believe that only Cambridge and possibly Boston, but Cambridge, still does that. All other cities and towns send those cases to the MCAD. And the reason is because trying fair housing cases would require a fair amount of process, and we simply don't have that expertise on our commission and the resources necessary to make sure that people's legal rights are fully maintained. And the MCAD does that for us and almost every other municipality. This does not mean, however, that the commission is blocked from sending test renters or buyers into appropriate situations to see if there's discrimination and to find other ways to test for discrimination. Further, they may work with complainants to try to mediate with landlords or real estate sellers without getting into the area of legal investigation or the process of a trial-like proceeding. So we are happy with the language we've all agreed on now, and we unanimously urge favorable action on our motion under Article 28.
Mr. Liao?
Robert Liao, Precinct 15, speaking on behalf of the advisory committee. The advisory committee voted to recommend favorable action on the motion under Article 28 by a vote of 22, 0 to 4. Thank you.
Mr. Frye?
Ernie Frye, Precinct 7, and speaking on behalf of the Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations Commission. I believe that I've already burdened you with enough words in the warrant article that you're currently considering, so I'll be brief. I wanted to extend my thanks to many individuals who participated in the creation of this warrant article and the revisions. The diversity commission chaired by, at the time, by Alex Coleman, the Fair Housing Chair is Sandy Bachelder, and a town meeting member who's been an extremely strong supporter of our efforts, Frank Farlow. All of them have contributed considerably to the detailed wording that appears in this warrant article. I also want to thank Robert Liao of the advisory committee and the Nancy Daley of the Board of Selectmen, who contributed significantly to making this warrant article a better document through their modifications. And of course, the moderator, Sandy Gadsby, for allowing us to make this correction that was discovered late yesterday afternoon. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, Marty Rosenthal, still Precinct 9 and PAX. I just want to commend especially Ernie for the hard work he did on this, as well as the commission, which has worked hard for a few years. And I advise a town meeting, this is one less thing that I will have to arise and nag people about at each town meeting, that this be done. So it's leftover work from the commission that Nancy chaired. I was on it, Bernard Green was on it, and I'm really happy that it's finally being done, and I again commend Ernie for his hard work.
Thank you. On the motion on Page 28-22 to--
One second, please.
Ms. Ames?
Yes, thank you.
You should please come to a microphone earlier--
Yes, I apologize.
-- when we don't get into the vote. Okay, your apology is accepted. Go ahead.
Thank you. In essence, this article, and this may be a question, too, in fact, this article is going to reduce the duties of the commission and the department. Am I correct? Chair of the commission?
Ms. Daley?
No, I don't believe that is correct. The language about try -- the sort of judicial language about in relation to the Fair Housing Act that was in the Human Relations Bylaw was removed a couple of years ago when we rewrote that bylaw. The language we're dealing with tonight is more in the nature of housekeeping. They did want to--
Housekeeping on fair housing, right?
Well, they're now putting -- they did -- we didn't -- our committee did not get to the Fair Housing Bylaw, as Mr. Rosenthal kept reminding me. And so they did bring the Fair Housing Bylaw up to match what the duties were in the--
So let me ask--
No, no, we're not going to have a dialogue here. You've asked your question, Ms. Daley has responded. Do you have another question?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The other one is-- Yeah, the, the other one is, um, this Commission and this department are doing a lot less than they used to, but now we are spending how much in this department?
What's, uh, what's its budget? Is that your question? Uh, we don't have that information.
I, I have the answer, I just wanted a confirmation.
Well, why don't you tell us what, what the answer is?
And I wanted to, anyway, it is, uh, around or over two-hundred thousand, and it is to do a lot less. Uh, from this perspective, as a minority person who would very much fought for having a strong Commission, it is very disappointing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Khan. Okay, on the motion on page twenty-eight dash twenty-two, going over to page twenty-eight dash forty, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carries by a vote of a hundred and seventy-four to one. Articles twenty-nine and thirty will be dealt with with a single debate. The motion under Article twenty-nine is on page twenty-nine dash four, to refer the subject of matter of Article twenty-nine to a committee consisting of a number of dignitaries listed in the first paragraph, the study being, uh, to study the training of animal control officers. It's moved by Mr. Jones, seconded by Ms. Khan. The motion under Article thirty is on page thirty dash three, to refer the subject matter of Article thirty to a committee consisting of various people appointed by, some of them by me, uh, to, uh, study the posting of police, Brookline Police Incident Reports on the Town Website. I call on Mr. Jones. That motion was also, uh, made by Mr. Jones, seconded by Ms. Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And, uh, I also want to thank you for, um, your help in redrafting my original motions. And, uh, I appreciated the time and consideration you gave in doing that. And, uh... What? Oh. I wanted, I was thanking the moderator for more than just letting me speak. It's Gary Jones, Precinct 3. And, uh, he also helped me modify my original motions, and I appreciate the time and consideration the moderator gave me. And these two articles originate out of an incident that happened on May nineteenth of this year. Now, if you put yourself back in time to May nineteenth, it's, it's a wonderful day weather-wise. You know, I was at home going back and forth between my porch and my house, and, uh, the weather was nice, and my wife had taken our dog, Yogi, out for a walk. Well, all of a sudden, you know, I, I also, by the way, I want to state that I come from a rural community in southeastern Massachusetts, and I've always felt blessed in the last couple of decades, living in an urban area where I feel safe. And my wife and my daughter, I, I feel safe about them walking to, around town at any time of the day or night. But all of that feeling of peace and tranquility on May nineteenth was shattered by this terrible screaming that was coming from, I realized it was coming from around the corner on Perry Street. So I ran over there, and, uh, many of my neighbors, thirty or forty, they kept coming out of their houses. They came out of their houses in response to this terrible screaming. And my wife was there, she was without a dog, and she was really in shock. And, and what had happened on Perry Street, there was a woman talking to my wife, Rachel, and Rachel had a very small dog, and my wife saw a very large dog running towards Rachel, and she said to Rachel, "This dog is coming at you." And when Rachel turned around, she picked up her small dog, Charlie, and the big dog knocked her over, knocked her on the ground, and started mauling her and biting her. And it was, it was horrific. And by the time I got there, my wife was in shock, and the woman, Rachel, had crawled to try to crawl into another house, and the dog was, you know, there, she, there the dog was, attacking her, and in the meantime, she's calling for help. And, uh, one of our neighbors, Nancy, actually pulled the dog off. And, and I want to make a correction because, um, the Advisory Committee did a good job in the subcommittee holding the hearing on public safety, because about a dozen of our neighbors came in, and they all testified about the horror of what happened and the disappointment they had in the way the police handled the situation. And, and, but what happened, uh, at some point, uh, one of our neighbors, Paul Nguyen, who lived across the street, went to get a shovel. And some of us thought that Paul had hit the dog, and I think in, in their write-up, they said that the dog was stunned. Uh, I don't think that ever happened. And when you realize, when an event like this happens, there's a lot of confusion, and there's a lot of problems with, and getting at the truth. Getting at the truth is what we all want. We all want the dog evaluated. And what happened in this case is that it fell upon the neighbors, it fell upon the neighbors to see that these things happened. And it's more than just happened to our satisfaction, because what happened when Nancy took the dog and pulled it off of Rachel, she passed it to a man named Elliot, who took his belt and was holding the dog and restraining the dog. And all of this was going on in complete confusion, and the boy that was walking the dog, about fifteen years old, was sitting on the wall. When the policeman came, and by the way, the ambulance came, and the woman was being taken to the hospital and her dog, Nancy, that pulled the other dog, the attacking dog off of Rachel, took Charlie. Charlie's on the way to the vet to have his mauling and bites taken care of, and Rachel was on the way to the hospital.
Now, Mr. Jones, uh, you've used up your five minutes telling us about the incident that precipitated these articles. I think you ought to get, in your remaining two minutes, to the, uh, to the motions.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get to the articles right away, and there's two of them. But the whole point is that this whole incident needs to be examined, because from the neighbor's point of view, from my point of view, when the officer showed up, he said, you know, it's not his responsibility to take care of the dog. And I was the one that asked him, "What are you going to do about this dog? What are you going to do about him?" He said, "It's not my responsibility..."
Now, Mr. Jones, please. You've described the incident, it, uh, you're dissatisfied with the police response. Please let us know about the articles before us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, it's an emotional thing, and it's emotional, it's an emotional thing for me, but the articles are our neighborhood's response to try to see that something in the future is done. And we, we recognize that in fairness to the police, we have to examine this situation, and that's why before you, you have an Article twenty-nine, a Selectmen's Committee to understand and try to come up with any recommendations that would help in having dangerous dog or animal attacks in the future, examine how these things are handled, and to make a recommendation if any changes are needed. And the Police Department and the Health Department are represented on that study committee. The second thing, um, is partly in what came out of the dog attack, is that it never appeared in the tab. And, uh, some of us wondered, you know, we thought, we wanted the impression that almost all things that happened in Brookline, serious things, would appear in the tab. We had another neighbor, uh, Mrs. Lineback, who got hit by a bike and was almost killed, and they kept looking for the article in the tab about the police incident. That's who never appeared. And, uh, when some of us called the Police Department, we were told that, well, we only, the police said at the Police Department, "Well, we only give the tab, you know, the things that we choose to give them." And I can understand the need for a person's public privacy, you know, in, in going public. But the reason Article thirty is before you, it's that other communities do this. Other communities even nearby, the city of Newton does this. They put and post online their police reports. But again, there's a lot of, uh, issues about privacy, but at the same time, if you, if you look at what's in the tab, I think you get a misimpression of what's going on in Brookline in regard to police incidences. I mean, it seems we have a lot of incidents of people tap dancing over someone's head in a condo, but there are a lot of serious things happen that don't seem to get reported. But the whole point of that article is to see that, examine the question with a moderator's committee, again, with a police department represented, to see if we can come up with a solution where the serious incidents that can be reported do get reported. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Janice Khan, speaking for the Advisory Committee. Too loud? Not, huh? Okay. Um, so you heard from the petitioner that, um, Articles twenty-nine and thirty were placed on the warrant in response to a violent dog incident that occurred in May of this year that sent one woman to the hospital and many neighbors feeling traumatized by that attack, which is what we did here at the Advisory Committee, and our hearts go out to, um, to the victim, who was very brave in coming and telling her story to us. Um, in both articles, the petitioner has, um, has raised some of the neighborhood's concerns about the way in which serious dog attacks in the town are handled. And if passed, these articles, the subject of these articles would be sent to committees for further study, and then report their findings and recommendations to Town Meeting in 2017. So, um, the police officer who responded to the emergency call was not the animal control officer, who was not on duty at the time of the attack. And animal control officers have extra training and access to specially outfitted van, a specially outfitted van, and special equipment which would have enabled him to impound the dog. But instead, the victim of the attack was taken by ambulance to the emergency room of a local hospital, and the officer, perceiving that the dog no longer posed a danger, released the dog into the care of its owners, and then urged the neighbors to go back to their homes. But the neighbors, as you heard, on the scene, had different expectations of the responding officer. The neighbors were traumatized by the attack and expressed frustration and anger, um, that the dog, which they perceived to be an ongoing public safety threat, was given back to the owner. They expected the officer to take it away from the neighborhood. And the neighbors also didn't realize until several months later that they had the option of filing a complaint with the Police Department for a citizen hearing. Warrant Article twenty-nine would require that every police officer be trained in the proper handling of dangerous violent dogs and other animal attacks, and that work has already begun. Chief O'Leary has written a special order to provide police officers with procedures to follow, including contacting the MSPCA for assistance in providing temporary care for a dangerous dog, and also requiring that officers now provide information to the victim on filing a written complaint for a hearing pursuant to Mass General laws, um, Chapter 140, Section 157. He has also designated the Director of Health and Human Services, Alan Balsam, to be the hearing officer on the complaints that were filed in September regarding this incident. Warrant Article thirty addresses a different concern, the posting of all police reports on the Town's website within forty-eight hours of the incident. Um, as, as Gary Jones told you, neighbors who witnessed the attack were distressed that there was no media coverage, so that the entire neighborhood could be made aware of the problem, and also there was no police report posted online. Now, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts requires that all police departments keep a log of incidents, and that the police log be open to the public. The log lists the date of the incident, the address, type of incident, and the reporting officer's name. In Newton, that log is accessible through the Newton Police Department website. In Brookline, however, uh, Brookline, however, doesn't post the incident log. Instead, the incident log is available by coming to the Police Department and requesting that information. It should be noted that incident logs are not the same as police reports, which was the focus of the original article. State law prevents certain reports from being made public, including reports of domestic violence, rape, juvenile offenders, and Corries Criminal Offender Record Information Regulations also prohibit reports involving ongoing criminal investigations from being made public. The other issue, notifying specific neighborhoods of public safety, of a public safety issue, might also not be achieved by simply posting these incident reports, since the Police Department files an average of sixty-five hundred police reports a year, and incident reports are arranged by date, not by neighborhood. But there may be other ways of notifying neighborhoods which could be explored. And given the legal requirements and constraints of posting police reports and the vast number of incidents, the petitioner is asking that a committee be formed to study the feasibility and desirability of posting police incidents online. So by a vote of nineteen zero one, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on referral of the subject matter of warrant Article twenty-nine to a Selectmen's Committee with a report back to the annual Town Meeting next year. And by a vote of eighteen zero one, recommends favorable action on, um, the motion to refer the subject matter of warrant Article thirty to a moderator's committee with a report back to the fall 2017 Town Meeting. Thank you.
There's very, there's really very little to add to, um, what, um, Ms. Khan said. This is a horrible incident, uh, involving a dog that, uh, for that period of time was out of control and caused grievous injury to, uh, both the victims as well as the witnesses who were traumatized by this, uh, this event. You know, the, the Board of Selectmen is very sympathetic to the concerns of the petitioner and other people in the neighborhood. And like was said, uh, you, we also agreed to, um, the Advisory Committee's, uh, proposal to refer this to a Selectmen's Committee, um, to, uh, investigate and report back to Town Meeting. The charge of the, um, Committee would include what's at page, um, twenty-nine dash four in your materials, to conduct a study of the training of animal control officers and police officers concerning handling attacks on citizens by dogs and other animals, for example, turkeys, coyotes, and some of the other wild animals, and possibly, although we're not aware of it right now, possible illegally held, uh, wild animals, uh, exotic wild animals. And, uh, possible enhancements to current training, um, of, of police. I think both the, uh, the animal control officers as well as other officers who should have, you know, some, some training, some significant training on how to handle these situations, and even possibly some equipment that would enable them to, uh, to deal with this. Uh, the Committee can also look at, you know, a number of other issues such as, uh, the bylaw, animal control, dog control bylaw, which is at eight point six of our bylaws, the ethical policies and procedures of the Police Department, which, you know, are very good, but I, but I can see a number of areas where, you know, they can be enhanced and maybe focused, uh, to deal with this more, um, efficiently and effectively. And of course, you know, we would want to, the Committee would also want to, um, review the special, uh, order of the Police Chief, just to, you know, inform itself as to what can and has been done in this area. So, um, the Board of Selectmen unanimously agreed to the referral, uh, or voted to approve referral to a Selectmen's Committee, um, Article twenty-nine. Article thirty similarly, um, is, uh, addresses a different aspect of the, or addresses a different aspect of the situation, uh, the issue of transparency of, um, uh, incident reports. Uh, it's a little more complex, uh, problem or, or issue than, yeah, is first, than it appears to be at first. And, uh, again, this warrants referral to a, uh, committee, uh, this time appointed by the moderator. And the Board of Selectmen unanimously agreed or voted to approve, um, the, um, proposal from the Advisory Committee to do so. Um, one thing that I would like to add is that, you know, we do have some information on the Town Website that I think, you know, should be looked at, uh, in terms of, you know, how effective or useful it is. There's, um, an animal control webpage that, uh, talks about lost dogs and... There's an animal control webpage that talks about lost dogs and coyotes. Unfortunately, the coyote link goes to a blank page, and, you know, that's something that, you know, maybe should be addressed, and maybe, you know, other information on that page with respect to animals should be put in there. And we should also think about, you know, like I mentioned earlier, wild animals and possibly illegally kept animals in town. But at any rate, the Board of Selectmen unanimously voted, as I said, to support the advisory committee's proposals for both Articles 29 and 30. Thank you. Oh, Mr. Moderator. I'm surprised you didn't yell at me for not announcing my name, Bernard Green, for the Board of Selectmen.
Well, I can't be all things to all people, Mr. Green. On the motion to refer on page 29-4 under Article 29, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Passes unanimously on the...
No.
With those who voting no, please stand.
Aye.
Okay, it's 173 to 3. Motion carries. On the referral motion on page 30-3, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries by a majority vote. The main motion under Article 31 is on page 31-3. Over to page 31-4. Moved by Ms. Fraley. Is there a second? That the town amend the bylaws relating to committees established by town meeting. The, I'm going to be a while, Ms. Fraley. You can relax for a minute.
I'm sorry?
You can relax for a moment. I'm going to be just a moment.
Sure.
The advisory committee and Board of Selectmen offer a substitute motion on page 31-7, in the middle of the page, that the town amend the town bylaws and with respect to the same subject matter, but a much shorter addition to the bylaws. And there's one change in the text of that motion, and it's the word "therefore" in the first line of the proposed new Article 21, 2.1.15. The word "therefore" should be deleted. And the reason for that is as follows. The motion, or the text, reads, "Commissions that are established pursuant to a vote of town meeting and therefore are not considered by the Attorney General to be public bodies under the open meeting law." Well, it's not true that all committees created pursuant to a vote of town meeting are considered by the Attorney General to be, not public bodies. In fact, committees consisting of, solely of town meeting members are the only, the only such committees that are, the Attorney General feels to be exempt from the open meeting law. So the word "therefore" is, creates an ambiguity, if not a misstatement of fact in the proposal of the advisory committee, and should be deleted. I'm told that the selectmen and the advisory committee, without having taken a formal vote on the, that deletion, agree with it, with what I've just described. That motion is a substitute motion made by Mr. Lescoye and seconded by Mr. Waschinsky. And a substitute motion is an amendment that, in effect, consists of a complete substitution of the main motion with a new, with the text of the main motion with a new provision. And if the, if this proposal of the advisory committee and the selectmen is passed by town meeting, then we will not reach the main motion of the petitioner. We will, however, have a second vote, since the substitute motion is in the same, is in the nature of an amendment. We will have a second vote on what has then become the main motion, which is the substitute motion. I will go through that parliamentary morass when we get to the voting. Meanwhile, let's hear from Ms. Fraley. Go ahead. You're on. Okay.
While the screen needs to come on, I want to thank Evan. There's no secret, I'm the world's worst technology person, and my thumbnail, my thumb drive broke.
Well, who are you? Let's start with that.
Regina Fraley, the world's worst techno person, Precinct 16. So thank you, Evan, for truly last-minute seat of your pants. Okay, so, what I'm asking is to go back for Brookline's future. I'm not asking you to do anything that didn't exist before 2010. Why? Because until 2010, every committee in this town was covered by the open meeting law. You had to comply. You had to announce your meetings, you have to publish them 48 hours in advance, had to give a reasonable agenda to indicate what you're going to talk about. You know a lot of the reason. Many of you have served on those boards. And if you had a complaint, it had to be responded to. But in 2010, and I always love it when they say a reform, an improved reform law, the law was radically changed. And here was the reasoning of the Attorney General at that time and since. Since the legislature exempted itself from the open meeting law, and since Brookline is a legislature, therefore, you're exempt. So far, so good. But the interpretation went further. It meant every committee you ever create to study something that is coming back to town meeting, as you often see in the back of your books, is not considered under, safed under the open meeting law. So 300 towns in North and 300 in Massachusetts were no longer covered. She did do a fail-safe, she said, however, a future Attorney General might interpret it differently. There's a gap, and Brookline can't afford to have that gap. So first, there's her guidelines, there's the law, there's her guidelines, and then there's the interpretation by the Division of Open Government. And as of right now, I'm the only person in this room who's ever contacted them and had written response back. And here's some of the interpretation. Committees covered by the open meeting laws depend on the purpose, not who appoints or who serves. You've been hearing a lot about hybrid committees, simply irrelevant according to Hannah Rush of the office and her boss, Jonathan Scarlett. We would look, and this is a quote from some of her correspondents, "at the purpose of a group. And if the group's purpose was to advise or submit recommendations to town meeting, it is likely not to be covered by the open meeting law. However, if you created a group to advise the town and/or a public body," and they actually, she actually wrote even the town administrator, "it would likely be a public body because the Board of Selectmen itself is a public body." And here's how she phrased it, "the principal guiding exemption status. The further away town meeting structure is, the more likely it is, from the town meeting structure, the more likely it is the committee will be viewed as subject to the open meeting law." That means, you form a committee and you say, go back to the Board of Selectmen, you are likely covered by the open meeting law. It could be challenged, and it should be, the advice should be sought by the Open Government Division. And that is Hannah Rush writing, on behalf of herself and her boss. Now, just to say it one more time, the appointing authority is irrelevant. You've heard that it's basically moderators' committee, not according to the AG, and they're the only ones that count. It can be a moderators' committee, it can be a board of committees. It matters what the purpose is. And if it ends up going back recommending policies or steps to be, actions to be taken by the Board of Selectmen, it's likely covered under the open meeting law. And either one, it can be a moderator, there's no way of knowing for sure that it's going to be covered. So the leaf blower committee, which many argued was not covered, is probably covered because they submitted two warrant articles. Nobody sought that advice from the AG. And I'm not saying they didn't follow the open meeting law, I believe they did. It's just that they didn't, they believed they were not subject to it. And we need to stop thinking we know what the law is. So that's the Attorney General's position, clearly refuting much of the advisory committee's report. Now let's look at additional objections they've raised. Bylaw 2.1.12, I call it a half-baked reading by the advisory committee. It claims, the advisory committee claims it justifies a separation of powers, meaning town council cannot possibly be in charge of enforcement. The moderator, who was one of the authors of 2.1.2, doesn't agree, at least that's what he wrote me. And the quote there is, "I see no connection between the proposal and the bylaw." He added, "If you read the whole of 2.1.12, you'll see it simply establishes some conditions that the selectmen must comply with before undertaking any such challenge. And it forbids town council for this purpose under most circumstances." It says, "Town council shall use his or her best efforts to defend the action taken by town meeting. In the event she doesn't agree with it, has a problem, thinks we were illegal, we actually have the moderator to step in." It seems not only town council, but the moderator could defend a town meeting action, as Lyndon Cohen would have said, hallelujah. So the separation of powers argument is dismissed. Already refuted by the moderator, as well as the executive branch versus elected argument is obviated by 2.1.12. So it's never been challenged, it remains on the books of the bylaw. You want to do something in the future, you may. Town council has therefore permission and perhaps a duty, as it reads, to represent town meeting in any case of a challenge. If you're still not sure whether she can wear two hats, investigator and attorney as well, same job, same powers, that's exactly what the Attorney General does. It's irrelevant whether the AG is elected or appointed, since it does not change the function, the duties and rights of that office. Neither does Article 31.
You have three minutes.
I'm sorry?
You have three minutes left.
I've got seven? You've got any ten?
I gave you 10. You've been seven. You have three.
Okay, well, let's run along then. Jennifer DePaso, former town council, wrote, she verified, she disposed remedies, "Any complaints I had all these years, and I made quite a few, it never went beyond her. She took care of it." It's no different. Article 31 just codifies it. We need to fill the gap. If the complainant is not satisfied in the complaint process, may file a complaint to the AG under the open meeting law. How can you know if attorney-client privilege is applied? I'm glad to say the town council, after her struggle, has agreed she will not apply attorney-client privilege to a complaint unless it's the usual executive session.
If you could try a little harder not to disparage people, I'd really appreciate it. Yeah, go ahead. Please try not to disparage people during your presentation, Ms. Fraley. Thank you.
Cost and volunteer status. It's been interesting to have it both ways, Orwellian doublespeak. When I first presented it, I was told it was going to be a humongous cost for town council if she were to do this. She said, she reported five cases in two whole years. When I reported back to the selectmen, they said, "Well, that's not enough cases to justify the bylaw." The hardship, I'm so tired, for 12 years I've been hearing this about my warrant articles, it would be so hard for volunteers to comply. Very condescending, patronizing, and simply not true.
You have one minute.
The other was that a claim by the AC that the minutes of a meeting can be approved by town council, by town meeting, not true. The case cited in 2015 was a selectman-created committee, subcommittee, and because they served on that committee, they could address the fact that they could verify the facts stated. It does not, I cannot speak to the approval process used by groups not subject to the open meeting law, and that's what we're talking about tonight. Article 31 can make that happen. As far as fines and appeals, in the history of Norfolk DA and in the memory of the current town council, we've never had a fine. The objective of complaints about violations of the open meeting law have never been, from my point of view, to raise, is to correct a problem. Working with Jennifer DePaso, the problems got solved. She nullified some things, she advised some other, problems got solved, the meetings went forward, and the public was able to attend and observe.
Please conclude, Ms. Fraley.
So, if you go to...
No, we're not going very far.
Slide number 41. In substance and practice, Article 31 does nothing more than return the town to its responsibilities as it existed prior to 2010.
Thank you.
And I repeat, out of 2.1.2, the quote, "Town council shall use his or her best efforts to defend the action taken by town meeting." You create a committee, she's supposed to defend that action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lescoye.
It's David Lescoye, Precinct 11, speaking for the, I'm David Lescoye, speaking for the, from Precinct 11, speaking for the advisory committee. The petitioner has been an advocate for open meeting transparent practices by all who serve in elected or appointed capacities in town government. She pioneered Brookline's bylaw mandating open meeting law training. Hopefully, such training is enhancing compliance. The Attorney General, as we've heard, has received inquiries about town meetings' open meeting law exemption. Does the exemption apply to town meeting committees that meet outside of town meeting sessions? Her interpretation is that both town meeting and its committees are exempt. Warrant Article 31 seeks to remedy this gap by proposing a local compliance requirement that applies to town meeting committees in Brookline. On September 27th, the school subcommittee met and held a public hearing to review the warrant article. Town council said that the aim of the warrant article is laudable. She opined that the number of cases would be minimal and the workload impact was not a concern. She did, however, express misgivings about an executive-appointed official performing an enforcement role with respect to town meeting. In addition, the committee and others present expressed concern about the warrant article requirement that the Board of Selectmen provide staff to town meeting committees, due process, and unresolved uncertainty about which committees may or may not currently be exempt from open meeting law. We just heard the petitioner say that the appointing authority wasn't, is not irrelevant, is irrelevant, but the first sentence of the main motion says, "The purpose of this bylaw is to acquire committees that are established or recommended by town meeting." So this certainly confirms the confusion that we have been trying to resolve, and it's not resolved. The subcommittee was concerned about making town meeting committees subject to investigation, enforcement, and fines beyond the current bylaw provisions in Brookline. It seemed quite heavy-handed, so the sub- It seemed quite heavy-handed, so the subcommittee voted to eliminate fines, three in favor, one opposed, no abstentions. A motion to recommend approval in anticipation of revisions by the petitioner and town council, which would reflect comments made at the hearing with fines deleted, passed four to nothing. On September 29th and October 6th, the full advisory committee put a review of warrant Article 31 on its agenda. Twice, consideration was deferred because the petitioner was not ready with a promised draft. The school subcommittee...
Mr. Lescoye, I'm not sure what, how helpful it is going through...
I told them I was zilled. That is not true. I was prepared the first night.
All right, sit down, Ms. Fraley. Mr. Lescoye, I'm not sure what, how helpful it is for you to go through each step of the process within the advisory committee. We'd like to know how it came out and what was the final rationale for its position.
Okay, lacking such a draft, the committee voted five, in the end, lacking a draft, we adopted the town council's version. And that was incorporating the town council's suggesting language, and that was voted five in favor and none opposed. On October 13th, immediately after the subcommittee hearing, the full advisory council sought to consider warrant Article 31 for the third time. The petitioner declined to remain for the deliberation...
No, no, Mr. Lescoye, we're not going to go there.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
So the, there was a motion to table, and then the advisory council voted 21 in favor, one against, and one abstention for the substitute motion found on page 31.7 of the combined reports. At the November 3rd full advisory council meeting, the petitioner requested that the advisory committee consider, reconsider warrant Article 31 vote in order for the advisory council to act on another version, which the petitioner was, another version of the petitioner's original warrant article.
You know, I've done my best to persuade you that going through each step of the advisory committee process is not very helpful, and...
Okay, I'm almost finished.
I'd also ask you to refer to your committee as the advisory committee, not the advisory council.
I'm sorry.
That's what I appointed you to.
Advisory committee agrees that the, there is an open meeting law enforcement gap. While the Attorney General's office currently does not include town meeting committees within the scope of enforcement, the advisory committee questions whether town council should be vested with these enforcement powers. The advisory committee motion is short and simple. It avoids extensive investigation, enforcement, and fine burdens. It closes the gap. The advisory committee motion is sufficient. We agree on the principle. We believe all are seeking to do the right thing. There are already sufficient tools in the current bylaws to deal with any problems. Therefore, the advisory committee recommends favorable action on the substitute motion in the combined reports.
Point of personal preference, Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Fraley, I'm not going to recognize you at this time.
Point of personal preference...
But what is your point?
The chair of the advisory was told by me on two occasions I was not well enough to stay late, and he knew that. I was prepared the very first night. The original articles went on before me way too long. I have to get home early, and he was informed of that. It was not because I wasn't prepared, and that's a reflection on my character and my preparation and the quality of my work ethic, and I resent that.
Thank you, Ms. Ames.
I need the right to say that.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. Mariela Ames, Precinct 15. Town meeting is supposed to represent and look after the interests and needs of the community, not only our individual interests and causes. Most town meeting members rely heavily on the combined reports for information on articles not in their area of interest. For those of us who have followed closely and participated in simple and controversial articles and watched how they get to the final versions of advisory committee or selectmen's motions, the combined reports do not mean thorough research. There is a lot that does not make it to the content of the report. Not only that, but material facts are left out. That is the case here. I ask you to go to page 31-6, third paragraph, please. It states, I quote, "Town council was advised by the Attorney General's office that a committee that includes members who are not town meeting members is a hybrid committee and thus must adhere to the open meeting law." Let's ask town council, whom exactly in the Attorney General's office did she speak to who told her that? I'll take my answer after, or if you can stop the clock right now.
Nope, I'm not going to stop the clock.
The petitioner states that the same office, stated the same office advised her exactly the opposite in writing. Hybrid committees that report to town meeting are not likely to be covered by the open meeting law. That means no enforcement of the open meeting law for many, many committees. The relevance? Under town council's misleading advice, we are led to believe that this article is really not necessary because most committees would be under the open meeting law. But the opposite is true. The reality is, we have a gap. So why do the advisory committee and the board of selectmen reject this article that should truly have zero opposition? This article seeks to improve our government so that our participation and that of the community is possible. Do the advisory committee and board of selectmen actually not want that? There is no need for complications. It is simple. All 30-plus boards and commissions are already subject to the open meeting law. This article is simply clarifying that all committees, including those created via town meeting, should comply with the open meeting law.
You have 30 seconds.
If not, there will be a mechanism to enforce, and it would only happen if a truly devoted person decided to pursue a complaint. But without a mechanism for enforcement, it is not a real law. It will only be a meaningless resolution. The petitioner is doing the work the town meeting should be pushing for. For the benefit of each one of you, I ask that you support the petitioner's motion. Thank you.
Mr. Washinsky. And could you not disparage anyone, Mr. Washinsky?
No. No one's being disparaged by me. Neil Washinsky for the Board of Selectmen. Thank you to the petitioner, Regina Fraley, for highlighting an exemption in the open meeting law and attempting to fix it in Brookline. The Board of Selectmen agrees with the intent of the proposed bylaw that all committees created at the request of town meeting and are comprised only of town meeting members to advise town meeting should operate in accordance with the open meeting law. The open meeting law sets a standard for open government and transparency. We believe in this law and do our best to comply with its letter and spirit. To the best of my knowledge, in Brookline in recent years, all such committees, whether they are appointed by the moderator or the selectmen, have been instructed to comply with the open meeting law. I'm not aware of any that have intentionally not complied. So while we agree with what the petitioner is trying to achieve, we think this proposal goes too far, is too complex for what it's trying to achieve, and adds other unnecessary complications. It adds all kinds of enforcement prescriptions, including the form of a log of activity, and the requirement that town council cannot assert attorney-client privilege when investigating a violation of the bylaw. It even states that the town administrator may provide staff to committees subject to the law. How does that relate to the open meeting law? The advisory committee language states our intent. It's simple, elegant, solves the problem. Let's not make this any more complicated than it needs to be. This affects very few committees, and they were complying anyway. The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends favorable action on the advisory committee motion.
And Mr. Ditkauf, would you come forward, please?
You're here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ernie Fry, Precinct 7.
You have three minutes, sir.
Yes, sir. Previously, I've presented warrant articles that have encouraged more transparency and openness in government operations to citizens that wish to be so informed. I cosponsored a warrant article adding a bylaw to require a public hearing before water rates are established by the Board of Selectmen. Also sponsored a change to the zoning bylaw to require specific advance notice to neighborhoods and abutters about developments in their neighborhoods. This article is in the same vein as those articles I previously proposed, and I am supporting the petitioner's article as originally proposed. The additional labor suggested that this article might require, I don't think is significant, and I, therefore, I encourage no action on the advisory committee motion and support the petitioner's warrant article.
Thank you, Mr. Ditkauf.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joseph Ditkauf, town meeting member, Precinct 11. As a matter of disclosure, you should know I'm a special assistant attorney general. In my role, it is defending drug courts. It has nothing to do with open meeting law, but you should know that. I did, however, when I was a Suffolk County, I worked at the Suffolk County District Attorney's Office, I had a role in open meeting law enforcement and did much enforcement in Suffolk County. And I can tell you that the open meeting law is an important protection for the public. It's an important process, and it is evident, in my opinion, that all town committees, regardless of how they're appointed, should be subject to the open meeting law. And that is what both the advisory committee version and the petitioner's version require. So why, I'm up here to speak in favor of the advisory committee version, and I'd like to explain why I think that it's better. If you compare the two, if you compare the law that applies when, we just have a normal town board, which is Chapter 30A, Section 23, under that, if you have a problem, an open meeting complaint, you have to complain to the public body first. The petitioner's warrant article has no such requirement. This is to allow self-correction by the public body before it goes any further. Under the statute that applies to everything else, you must complain within 30 days of either what happened or when you could reasonably expect it to find out. The warrant, the petitioner's version has no such requirement. You can complain at any time. And of course, obviously, that is so that things are resolved quickly. Under the statute, the Attorney General has to determine things in a timely manner, and according to her guide, that's generally within 90 days. Under the petitioner's article, town council would have 10 business days to start, 20 days, just days, not business days, to finish. And the AG, unlike town council, has dedicated staff for this purpose. Under the statute, the Attorney General may resolve, on the regulations, may resolve the investigation with a telephone call, letter, or other appropriate form of communication that explains the violations and clarifies the subject's obligations, which is what I usually did for Suffolk County. Under the warrant article, town council shall recommend appropriate remedies. Under the statute, the public body can obtain judicial review if they disagree with the determination. There's no such provision for review of any sort. So I don't think that our town committee, our town meeting committees should be subject to much stricter requirements than applies to every other town board or commission. And under the advisory committee version, you can still complain to town council, to the moderator, to the selectmen, and get whatever relief is appropriate, and I think that's all that's required here. Thank you.
Mr. Davis.
I'm John, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Jonathan Davis, town meeting member, Precinct 10. I'm supporting the motion by the proponent on page 31-3 to 31-4. I note that the selectman, the selectmen's recommendation says that, and I'm quoting here, "Out of the thousands of volunteer hours served by volunteer committees, there have been only a few instances where complaints were made." The board's experience on all committees that they have served on has been that they have attempted to comply with the open meeting law. So it's apparent from what the selectmen write that this is not going to be an awful lot of work, that, and there aren't, don't seem to be a lot of complaints that are going to happen. In terms of what the, what the motion by the proponent requires, in terms of what the town council has to do, it is that the town council should, shall recommend appropriate remedies. Well, you know, that's a great deal of discretion there. Appropriate remedies can mean a letter, appropriate remedies can mean a phone call. There's all kinds of flexibility there, and I think that this is something, we're making a mountain out of a molehill in terms of trying to pick, trying to pick moles out of this mountain here. It ain't. It's pretty simple. There's a lot of flexibility, there's a lot of discretion in the town, in what the town council can do, and it doesn't look like there's going to be an awful lot of work. I think we need it, and I think that this is something that we should just vote for, and let's move on. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Have a comment?
Mr. Doggett, we'll hear from you, and then I'll entertain a motion for the question.
Thank you very much. John Doggett, Precinct 13, Chair of the Leaf...
John Doggett, Precinct 13, Chair of the Moderator's Committee on Leaf Blowers. The petitioner state... I'll do the stand-up next. The petitioner stated that the, our committee believed that it was exempt from the open meeting law. It did not. I, specifically after our organizational meeting that you held, went, or called town council on this very point. We had six town meeting members and one who was not. We were a hybrid. And town council urged me very strongly to, that the committee should comply with the open meeting law. In fact, she went further and said that even if we were all town meeting members, she would still give us the same advice. And so, going back to the committee, the committee discussed this and was, under no, excuse me, under no, was fully knowledgeable that we were to proceed under the open meeting law guidelines. So we posted meetings. In fact, we even canceled a meeting because the posting was incorrectly done. We published minutes, and we obeyed the open meeting law to the letter, we believe. And so consequently, I would just like to track that on the record.
Thank you. On the, there's been a motion to terminate...
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Jones, we're going to have, unless you've got a point of order or something...
No, I want to speak to the question.
Well, I'm sorry, I had a motion for the question. It's been seconded, and we will have a vote on whether to terminate debate. I have no one else signed up to speak. You see who's been at the microphone, Ms. Ames and Mr. Jones. So those in favor of terminating debate, please raise your hands. Those opposed, that motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Now, we vote first on the advisory committee's and selectmen's substitute motion on page 31-7. If the substitute motion passes, then we will vote again on the substitute motion as the main motion. If the substitute motion fails, we will vote on the petitioner's motion on page 31-3. So on the motion on page 31-7, those in favor, please raise your hands. The motion carries by a vote of 165 to 12. Are there any abstentions? And two abstentions, three abstentions, sorry. On the motion on page 31-7 as the main motion, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries. Article 32. The motion before you under Article 32 is on page 32-8. Over to 32-9, it's a resolution... Over to 32-9, it's a resolution relating to affordable housing, and it's moved by Mr. Schwartz, seconded by Mr. Doty. The selectmen propose an amendment, which is found on Page 32-6. At the bottom of the page, they would have the concluding paragraph, now therefore have that paragraph substituted for the two last paragraphs, the essentially underlined paragraphs on Page 32-9. That is moved by Mr. Waschinsky and seconded by Ms. Heller.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Derek Chang, 11 Precinct 9. I want to provide you with an update on Chapter 40B Housing Development Proposals in Brookline. As a reminder, in the spring 2015 town meeting, John Sherman and Selectwoman Nancy Heller had the foresight to propose Article 17. This warrant article affirmed the importance of affordable housing while recognizing the clear and present danger that multiple Chapter 40B proposals could have on the town. Their predictions have been fulfilled in a dramatic fashion. As you see in the map above, within the last year, nine new 40B projects have been proposed. Six of these projects, depicted in blue, proposed a total of 279 housing units within a quarter-mile radius of the devotion school. Another two projects proposed 144 units at two sites near Route 9, and a second application was even made for Hancock Village. Next slide, please. As an example, consider this latest proposal, 143 to 148 Babcock Street. Two adjacent buildings are proposed to be replaced by two five-story behemoths with 62 housing units and 17 parking spaces. The red rectangle provided, shows the rendition by the architect of the existing Victorian home. This neighborhood will be permanently changed by the dense crowding, increased traffic, and loss of open space that John Sherman and Selectwoman Heller had predicted. Next slide, please. The rationale for this warrant article comes from observing the recalcitrant tactics of developers at a couple of zoning Board of Appeals public meetings for two of these proposed projects. It was quite clear that developers are using stall tactics, failing to engage in substantive issues with the planning department and the zoning board of appeals, and really caring mainly about maximizing their profits with very little regard to the valid local concerns provided by the Chapter 40B statute, which is in the explanation of your warrant article. As I mentioned, the fabric of the neighborhood is irrevocably harmed, as you can quite clearly see from pictures. Importantly, the increased demand on municipal services could create an annual operating deficit exceeding $2 million a year. There's a pervasive myth about Chapter 40Bs that nothing can be done. The statute itself allows zoning boards to impose conditions that address clearly state of local concerns. Oftentimes, developers don't like having their proposals reduced to a reasonable scale, and they appeal these conditions to the Massachusetts Housing Appeals Commission. Then it falls on town council to defend these appeals. We believe that the legal defense costs that would be proposed to be supported or endorsed without actually being spelled out, which would happen with a normal budgetary process, would represent a hedge against this huge structural deficit that the town faces, not to mention the huge detriment to the local neighborhoods. Next slide, please. The Hancock Village Fiscal Impact Study conducted on a 40B about 10 years ago provided a methodology for estimating fiscal impact, which I've used to estimate the potential fiscal impact for the nine proposed 40B projects from this year alone. The building and land estimates that are submitted by developers to the state regulatory agencies provide a worth of value of about $140 million. Multiplying by the residential tax rate, the revenues from these increased housing developments would be about $1.5 million a year. Using the methodology provided by the Ninth Elementary School Committee, promulgated by the Civic Moxy Consultants, of estimating the number of schoolchildren, there would be 234 schoolchildren residing in these projects. Multiplying by $16,300, the cost to educate a student in 2016, would be a $3.8 million yearly expense. This is only the expense from municipal services, from education. There are obviously other municipal services, such as fire, sanitation, et cetera, and this does not include any discussion of capital projects. So, by this conservative estimate, the town is faced with a structural annual deficit of over $2.3 million per year. Next slide, please.
You have one more minute.
As many of you are familiar, there have been legal action on several 40B developments in the recent past. Developers tend to really listen to legal action. They don't really respect the zoning board of appeals, and this is some outcomes that have been either secured for $45 million or ongoing with Hancock Village as a result of legal action. In terms of the motions before you, the petitioners and I favor the advisory committee's language. We believe that, in the spirit of the normal budgetary process, and in deference to the normal budgetary process, we believe that the specific call-out of budgeting line items for 40B legal defense provides more teeth to the warrant article and sends a clearer signal to developers that this kind of behavior and proposals are really unacceptable to the presence of Brookline. Thank you.
Mr. Doty, you're next.
Neil Waschinsky for the Board of Selectmen. There's no doubt that the town is being deluged by 40B applications like it's never been seen before. A combination of a robust economy in Boston, the high cost of land, and relatively restrictive zoning is encouraging developers to find ways to build larger projects than they could otherwise. Chapter 40B is a convenient tool for developers to bypass our zoning in exchange for setting aside units for affordable housing. The law's been around since the late 1960s and is specifically designed to increase the supply of affordable housing in a way that makes it difficult for the town and neighbors to fight a project. Once a community reaches a threshold of 10% of its housing units being on the so-called subsidized housing inventory, we can say no to such developments. We're currently at 8.6%. But we also must realize that the lack of affordable housing is a major problem in Brookline and the Boston region in general, and not all 40Bs are bad. We've tried to address the problem using tools such as support for the Brookline Housing Authority, inclusionary zoning, and an affordable housing trust fund, but there's only so much tools like that can accomplish, given the expense of building new housing and the reduction of resources from the federal government especially. And I strongly suspect that affordable housing will not be a priority of the incoming Trump administration. The one bright spot in all this is that the current housing market seems to be favoring the creation of rental housing, and due to a quirk in the way the subsidized housing inventory is computed, when a 40B is rental, even the market rate units count. Because of this quirk, it appears likely that we will reach the 10% threshold soon and be able to take back control of our zoning. But until units are approved, the 40B door is still open. Here are some numbers. We need 346 units added to the SHI, subsidized housing inventory, to meet the 10%. Currently, there are six 40Bs in the ZBA pipeline totaling 497 units. There are three more seeking approval from the state, totaling nine, that's the number you saw earlier, totaling 153 units, and there may be more coming before the 40B door closes. With this backdrop, the Board of Selectmen is committed to doing all it can to ensure that proposed developments are appropriate for the town and the affected neighborhood. We'll evaluate each case individually within the framework presented by the 40B law, assessing the risks and likely outcomes of potential litigation. We also realize that in many instances, negotiating with a developer may produce the best outcome. If we need to litigate, and town council's budget is insufficient, we will not be shy in seeking a reserve fund transfer from the advisory committee. The selectmen's version of the resolution, in our view, better states the town's policy of diligently defending the town's interests to ensure that 40B developments are appropriate for the town and the affected neighborhood as much as we can. We therefore urge favorable action on the selectmen's motion.
I'm going to call on Mr. Lowey next. And then you, Mr. Doty.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Werner Lowey. Until I retired last year, I was chairman of the Housing Appeals Committee. Most real estate development involves negotiation. Just look at Two Brookline Place, or the proposed hotel in the industrial island that we voted on two nights ago, or the very successful affordable housing on the top of Fisher Hill. In my experience, negotiation is most effective when it comes early in the process. Even though this is just a resolution, I'm concerned that no matter how it's phrased, it'll be interpreted as encouraging town officials and neighborhoods not to negotiate early on, but rather to push every single proposal into a very expensive appeals process. For that reason, I intend to vote no action.
Thank you, Mr. Doty. And Ms. Rosenstein, would you please come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dennis Doty, Precinct 3, Advisory Committee, speaking for the Advisory Committee. Warrant Article 32 is a resolution urging town meeting to support funding requests from town council to defend the town's planning interests. The advisory committee is well aware of the large influx of 40B applications and the unprecedented workload this may generate. The advisory committee is supportive of the objectives of warrant Article 32, but had several concerns, as it was originally written. There is, after all, a well-established budgetary process to ensure that town council, along with all other departments, has sufficient funding for their needs, and there is a well-established reserve process for unexpected needs that departments avail themselves of when appropriate. With that said, the advisory committee does recognize the extraordinary nature of the current set of development proposals facing the town and the need to devote significant resources to evaluating them and, where appropriate, fighting them. The advisory committee agrees that a vote for this resolution affirms this recognition and puts 40B developers on notice that they will face a town that will litigate when warranted. As the finance committee, the advisory committee believes that appropriate funding should be made available in the upcoming budget, and that it is appropriate to indicate strong support for this via the resolved clause found in our motion on Page 32-9. The advisory committee urges a vote of no action on the selectmen's amendment, and by a vote of 15 in favor, four opposed, and two abstaining, recommends favorable action on the amended motion offered by the advisory committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck Schwartz, Precinct 9, in the heart of Coolidge Corner. First of all, in response to something that Mr. Lowey said, we've, in the many meetings we've gone to, the 140B proposed in our neighborhood on Center Street, always looks so much easier when I'm sitting out there, that we've invited the developer to negotiate with us, and the developer continues to ignore our requests. So, I'm going to ask you all to imagine that one day, you find that a beautiful home or building in your neighborhood has been bought by a developer, and that a 40B has been proposed. Something tall and out of scale with the neighborhood is about to be built. The character of your neighborhood, one which you have come to love, and one of the reasons that you chose to live in Brookline, is about to change. You say that this can't happen. The town will never let this happen. We'll organize the neighbors, attend meetings, tell the appropriate boards what our concerns are, and know that they would protect our interests. But it's a 40B, and the town is often reluctant to do much for fear of losing in court. They go through the 180-day process, and in the end, they give the go-ahead. You feel helpless. But this doesn't have to be. As Mr. Chang mentioned earlier, the 40B statute allows zoning boards to weigh local concerns against the regional need for affordable housing. These local concerns include health, public safety, environment, design, planning, and open space. Building height and size and massing are included in the 40B review guidelines. The advisory committee's version gives some hope. The one's supported by the petitioners, it encourages the town to do more by supporting efforts of town council to defend the town's interests before the Housing Appeals Committee and the other appeals court regarding 40B applications, and it requests that appropriate funding be made available for such activities. This is the important part of the advisory committee's version, because the advisory committee is the town's finance committee. If they see fit to include language that appropriate funding be made available, then it is important for you all to consider. When I moved back to Brookline 17 years ago, I became involved in opposing a 40B proposed for 121 Center Street. The neighbors organized. Some of them are in this room tonight. We attended meetings, and in the end, the 40B application was withdrawn. The beautiful home was not saved, but the proposed six-story building was never built. This experience inspired me to run for town meeting. Now that I'm here, and that there are six 40Bs proposed for Coolidge Corner, I urge you to vote for favorable action for the advisory committee's version of Article 32, and I urge you to vote no action on the Board of Selectmen's amended version. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenstein.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hello, I'm Harriet Rosenstein, Precinct 9, Town Meeting. Much of what I thought I was going to be saying has been said very eloquently by my two colleagues. I wanted, I wanted to speak with you as an example, to offer you an exemplary narrative, fundamentally, of what we, in confronting a 40B application on our street, what we have undergone and the conclusions to which we have come. I think we've pretty much gotten there. I just want to read you the little bit of preface that I had written, and then make a few more remarks, and then stop. I want to begin on a purely subjective level. This is not simply about me. I think it's about everybody who joined our organization in trying to save a quite handsome, 100-year-old, two-story brick building on Center Street, Coolidge Corner. Some of you know that building, I think, very well. The building is still up for demolition, and that instead of its present two stories, it is to be a six-story building. Instead of the ample setbacks one observes today, there are to be virtually no setbacks. Portions of this building now run, quite literally, if this is accepted as is, up to the sidewalk. And you can draw your own conclusions about the reasons for this design, and I think also, experience vicariously how horrified our neighborhood is at its violation by this likelihood. What I wanted to say is that I would like you, as individuals, and then as members of town meeting, who might confront this situation in your own residences, in your own areas, and indeed, throughout our town, what the consequences are of engaging in this kind of struggle, which on the face of it has to do with greed, not at all with the wish to make the living situations of people with inadequate funds somehow possible. And what I made, as my colleagues were talking, is just a list of the costs we have undergone during this process, and that they're not unique to us, that's what I'm trying to say. You'll all be able to experience the joys of what we have experienced and continue, I fear, to experience. Certainly, there will be economic costs. You will be hiring lawyers, and that's part indeed of the purpose of our article. You will not only be hiring a lawyer, I can guarantee that, but if you decide -- You will not only be hiring a lawyer, I can guarantee that, but if you decide then to appeal to the state because the verdict that has been handed down is manifestly inadequate and/or unjust, each portion and each period of that appeal legally is going to cost you. So we're talking, first of all, about money, and that indeed is, in large measure, what our article is about. It will cost you also emotionally. It's an extraordinarily difficult kind of journey that you would be on. Sometimes you feel hope, sometimes you feel total despair. Very often, you feel flatly angry, angry. You will find that there are great costs in terms of your organizational capacities, of your tactical intelligence, of your political skills, many more, many more. All of this in order to appeal, and with a mixture of smarts and luck, and good people on the town boards, good advice from the town generally, to defeat 40B applications that have been submitted for inappropriate reasons. I think, really, there's nothing more that I need to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yep, you are welcome, sir. Take care.
The usual suspects. Mr. Davis?
Jonathan Davis, Precinct 10. I'd like, I have a question, and I also have a suggestion for a friendly amendment, but let me get to the question.
Well, we're not going to take an amendment from the floor, I'll tell you that.
Okay, well, then I would make a comment, a friendly comment, after my questions, okay? My question is this. The resolved clauses in the Selectmen's recommendation and in the Advisory Committee's recommendation, it seems to me that the Selectmen's resolved clause is rather more diplomatic. The Advisory Committee's resolved clause is much more, how should I put it, aggressive? Is there, question, is there a difference in terms of how either the Housing Advisory Committee or the courts might view either one if called to the attention of the adjudicating body by the attorneys for the 40B proponents?
I think that's a fair question for Town Council.
I'm not sure I understand your question. Could you repeat it?
Yeah, in the nutshell.
Pardon me, Joslyn Murphy, Town Council. Sorry, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, if you take a look at the resolved clauses, one on 30, at the bottom of 32.6, one at about 60% of the way down on 32.9, the Advisory Committee's on 32.9 is really, really much more in tune with, "We're going to go fight." And the one, the Selectmen's on 32.6 is, "Well, we're going to, we suggest that you defend diligently." My concern, and this is a question, is, could one be viewed, could the Advisory Committee's resolution be viewed as a kind of a blanket commitment, or interpreted or misinterpreted by proponents of a 40B project, misinterpreted as, "Oh, well, the town of Brookline just has a policy of denying 40Bs and of resisting 40Bs, and therefore, that is not an acceptable reason, or that undermines the reasons that the town might give in trying to have a 40B derailed either at the Housing Advisory Committee or in court."
And you're assuming that this is in the context of litigation, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
That was a very long question, but I believe the answer is no. I don't think the language in either version would have any effect whatsoever on how a judge or a court views a case.
Thank you.
Rather, if I could just add, I see the difference as being the Advisory Committee, in the Advisory Committee's motion, as being more of a finance tool, asking Town Council to ensure that there's appropriate money in the department's budget in order to address the plethora of Chapter 40B cases that we're facing. In contrast to the Selectmen's, which is very supportive of, very supportive of an opposition where appropriate and necessary to Chapter 40B cases.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, I, since I cannot offer a friendly amendment, I would make a comment about all of the, all of the proposals that are in Article 32.
Yeah, let's get with it, true.
Fine. I'm a little bit distressed by each of them saying that there's a whereas clause that the various appeals could overwhelm the intellectual resources of Town Council. I really think that that is inappropriate. I don't think anything would overwhelm the intellectual resources of Town Council. And I would respectfully request, again, that there be a friendly amendment of all of them to just change, delete the intellectual and, and just, and budgetary, and just say, or overwhelm the budgetary resources.
Nope. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, thank you again, Marjorie Rosenthal, Precinct 9, and co-chair of PACS. I want to commend Derek, and Chuck, and Harriet for bringing this to Town Meeting. I have a question for the Selectmen, but, and it's a short question, but before I get to it, I want to explain why I hope to vote, I will vote no action on their resolution, their article, and for the Advisory Committee article. North Brookline, and particularly Precincts 8 and 9, have been under siege for my whole life, and that's really, for those who want the math, since 1947 in Precinct 9. I know I don't look it, but, and that's what got me involved in town politics when I came back from law school and found the beautiful school, the Dexter School, down in Dexter Park was there. So we have worked very hard to protect this neighborhood for the last two decades, and town staff and the Planning Department and the Selectmen have supported us on many occasions. The latest proposal at 40B at 134 Babcock is one of the 11 properties that Bill Powell and I and many others tried to protect about six years ago, and passed by a majority vote, but didn't get two-thirds to downzone it. A few years ago, Trish Corners had a proposal for extra zoning protection in Coolidge Corner, and I dissented on CTOs, which recommended against it, and that did not pass either.
Now, Mr. Rosenthal, I'm not entirely certain what all of this has to do with them.
Well, where it's going is that...
We'll get there, please.
I'm getting there right now, which is that these projects for the neighborhood are really, force us to do guerrilla warfare at our own expense. And I've been to three 40B hearings in the last couple of months, and others that have spoken here tonight have been to even more. And it's just not right that we are forced to do this on our own resources, at our own expense, at our own time, without more help from the town. And I would like to ask the Selectmen a simple question, and I have a feeling that the answer will be the yes or no. Do they really think that their wishy-washy proposal is adequate to help us neighborhood people?
I think a simple yes or no will do. Mr. Waschinski says yes. Okay, I'll take that motion. I think we've, I think we're getting into some polemics here, and not, anyway, I will accept a motion for the question. Is there a second? Okay, you see who is at the microphones. On the motion to terminate debate, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, we're going to take an electronic vote. This is Article 32, motion for the question. I have no more speakers, by the way, signed up in advance. Okay, you may cast your vote. This is on the motion to terminate debate. Yes is a motion, is in favor of terminating debate, number one. Two is a motion is against terminating debate, and three is an abstention. And this is not a recorded vote, it's for purposes of verifying the count. The motion fails, it requires a two-thirds vote. Mr. Hochleitner, is it?
Thanks, Brian Hochleitner, Precinct 6. I have a question, sorry, this is short. Is that better? I have a question for Town Council. I guess I'm struggling with the cost-benefit analysis of not one versus the other, but voting yes on either of these motions. I feel like this is a non-binding resolution that isn't really going to, I mean, we can all agree that 40Bs are damaging the town, and there's some real cost to it, and there's a lot of problems with them. I guess I'm wondering, doesn't, doesn't this, just maybe picking up a little bit on what Mr. Davis asked, doesn't this give a developer an argument in court against the town to show that we're acting in bad faith, or some of these comments, or appeals, or challenges to 40Bs are really part of a sort of town-wide effort to...
You know, Town Council just answered that question, which was precisely Mr. Rosenthal's question. I'm sorry, Mr. Davis's question.
Well, I thought his was a little bit narrower. He was comparing two clauses, whereas clauses in the, I'm actually asking a slightly different question, which is, should, does it make sense to vote yes on this if it creates litigation risk and isn't really kind of adding anything other than a, "Gosh, we don't like 40Bs"?
Town Council?
Yeah, in response to that question, I think, I think this Warren Article was motivated, in fact, I'm certain it was, having had discussions with the petitioners. It was motivated by a lot of neighborhood, or certain neighborhoods.
Well, Town Council, Ms. Murphy, it's not, that's really not what you were asked. You were asked if there's any litigation risk in our passing, our voting in favor of resolutions such as this.
But, Mr. Moderator, I feel so passionate about this issue.
I'm sure you do, I'm sure you're spending most of your day with it.
My answer remains the same. No, I do not believe it increases risk.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Steve Cumante, Precinct 16, and I've had occasion over recent years to spend a lot of time with 40B and listening to these things. And basically, you know, the 40B regulations, the standards for balancing burden and the need for housing go on for about three pages. Basically, it is essentially ignored. When you, when you try to explain to developers all of the factors, the bulk, the size, that, I've listened to several consultants say that none of that matters, only safety matters. The fact is, unless we're prepared to actually follow the regulations, which over the three pages are not entirely unreasonable if anybody actually would enforce them, I think that unless we're prepared to, make it clear, we're prepared to actually read the regs and read them to the Housing Appeals Committee, they're their regulations after all, and go to land court and read the regulations, there's nothing to bargain. If, in fact, it looked like we were going to actually read those regulations, and we were going to enforce them, we might be able to bargain. But as long as, and I think they're quite realistic in assessing that, frankly, unless the fire chief comes in and says the building's going to burn down, pretty much, we've got nothing to talk about. And that's, that's the way their attitude has been. And I think that the purpose of simplifying and making it clear that the town supports not just the struggle against 40B, but actually the following enforcement of what the regulations say, and I think that actually would send a good mission, that would send a good message, really, to the zoning board as well, because the zoning board gets told that there's nothing they can do other than safety and so on. Basically, if it looks like the town's behind them and is prepared to basically do what they have to do to enforce the regs, then they become meaningful, and I think even the zoning board will be in a position to do the bargaining that we'd like them to do. Because right now, the three pages, you could throw them away, there's just, other than safety, there's nothing anybody respects as far as the burden on the town. And you can see the burden on town looking at, looking at the projects that were illustrated there, that frankly, a little bit of litigation is nothing compared to the burden that this puts on our budget going forward. So I think that the one time they were looking for money from the Advisory Committee, it got tabled and put off. It had to do with an earlier project about a year ago. I think making it simpler makes it more realistic that we can reasonably expect to enforce the reg, and we expect the zoning board to do so, and we're behind them when they do. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Susan Roberts, Precinct 2. I'm in favor of the Advisory Committee's resolution, but I do have a question for Town Council, and that relates to whether or not, in your view, the Advisory Committee resolution could also include some sort of action that we could consider that might be a little bit more creative and out of the box of 40B, such as some sort of unconscionability type of defense?
Well, Ms. Roberts, that's not a question for Town Council, that's a question for me, and the answer is no, it can't. I will take no expansion of either of these motions from the floor.
So in other words, if we were, because the way I look at the two, the Selectmen seem to have, the Selectmen's version seems to have more latitude in terms, when it references other forums, as opposed to the...
Well, you have to make that, make your own decision on the, which of these is the better version, based on what's in the combined reports, not, because I'm not going to accept any amendments.
So I'm not asking an amendment, I guess I'm asking for an interpretation...
Of what?
...of the Advisory Committee's, and whether it would allow funding for litigation that is outside the 40, quote-unquote, the actual 40B process, for example, some sort of counterclaim on unconscionability, maybe a different forum necessarily. I guess that's what I'm asking, is whether or not, instead of thinking about this always as a 40B defense for us, that we could actually figure out a way, within the context of a project that has been proposed, for us to be a little more creative, maybe it's Chapter 93A on fair and deceptive practices, something else.
The Advisory Committee resolution, the operative clauses, the last two paragraphs on page 32-9, are strictly limited to 40B applications. Ms. Pelkey?
Thank you.
We'll hear from Ms. Pelkey.
Lynd Olson Pelkey, Precinct 2. I also support the AC version. I have a question about the criteria in determining mass developments, approval of the, I'm going to get the terminology wrong here, but the preliminary permit that allows the application to go forward, or also even in housing court or land court, as we get to it. What I'm talking about is, you know, it seems like we're fighting these with like a squad running around to each individual development, and what we're really dealing with is a tsunami, and the impacts go beyond the individual impacts, because it's cumulative impacts. It's cumulative impacts on all of our services, not just the town's schools, it's the parks, it's the roads, it's everything. And the neighborhoods are going to be basically decimated if these go forward. So I'm just asking, is there anywhere in the regulations that allows some kind of, you know, defense against the bulk and the rapidity and the, just the scale of these projects altogether, and cumulative impact?
I think the answer to that is no, is it not?
Not much.
Or is it more complicated, everything is?
The answer to that question is that once the town reaches the safe harbor of 10%, we are protected. We are, I believe that someone earlier said, perhaps it was Selectmen, Chairman Waschinski said...
said, we're at about...
Eight-six.
Eight, eight and a half percent. Once we reach 10%, we are protected.
But there's no criteria that looks at the impacts combined?
No, the regulations permit, once they reach a certain threshold, the ZBA doesn't have to hear an additional case until the prior cases are resolved, but there is, each 40B application stands on its own.
Thank you. Okay, we'll try again. Motion is to call the question, that is, terminate debate. You see three people at the microphones who will not be able to speak. If you vote in favor of this motion, is there a second? All in favor, please raise your hands. All opposed, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. On the first...
Recorded vote, please.
On the amendment?
Are we ready to vote?
Yes, we're ready to vote. And we vote first on the Selectmen's amendment, which would replace the advisory committee's last two paragraphs of their motion with the paragraph at the bottom of page 32-6. Is that the vote on which you wish...
Main motion.
Okay. So, we're not having an electronic vote on that. The question before you is whether to...
I thought that was the original motion for a recorded vote, and if it's not, I would make it...
Well, on the amendment, or on the main...
Because I believe the amendment is the real issue before us, is the Selectmen's proposed amendment, so I would ask for a recorded vote on that one.
Are there 35 Town Meeting members who would like a recorded vote on the amendment proposed by the Selectmen? And I'm sure there will be eventually. Yes. Okay, this is Article 32 amendment.
Excuse me, what are we voting on?
You are voting on the Selectmen's amendment, which would replace the two paragraphs at the end of the advisory committee motion, the last two paragraphs on page 32-9...
Point of voter is?
With the, just a minute, please, with the paragraph at the bottom of page 32-6. So, you're voting on the amendment at the bottom of page 32-6. Mr. Schwartz?
If you could just clarify what a yes or a no vote means?
Okay, we're voting on the proposal to, of the Selectmen, to amend the operative paragraph, as I said, at the bottom of page 32-6. If you press 1, that means you're in favor of the Selectmen's amendment. If you press 2, that means you're against it, and if you press 3, you're abstaining.
Well, what I meant was, what is the result of a no vote as opposed to a yes vote?
Well, if you, if the Selectmen's amendment is turned down, we turn to the main motion unamended.
That's, that's what I thought, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, did you say that the main, we would go to the main motion, which is the advisory committee?
If the Selectmen's motion...
Fails.
Fails, then we go to the main motion...
Which is?
Unamended, which is the motion found on page 32-8 and 32-9.
The advisory committee's?
Your motion.
The advisory committee's?
Thank you, I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, it's the advisory committee motion, right.
Thank you.
Okay, we're not, however, we're taking an electronic recorded vote on the Selectmen's amendment. Okay, you're free to vote, early and often. Just make sure you get your vote in on time. You have 40 seconds to contemplate. That motion fails by a vote of 20 in favor, 154 against, and nine abstentions. On the main motion of the advisory committee on page 32-8...
Recorded vote, please.
We'll have a recorded vote if 35, 34 of your colleagues want one. Okay, we'll have a recorded vote on, this is Article 32, main motion. Okay? Motion carries by a vote of 159 in favor, 18 opposed, and eight abstentions. Article 33. The motion under Article 33 is on page 33-7, over to page 33-8. Moved by Ms. Granoff and seconded by Ms. Daley. That is a resolution relating to property tax relief, and once again, a line has been left out. The resolution, if you read down paragraph, page 33-7, to the second full paragraph, "Therefore, the Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, et cetera, on the following motion," please insert "voted," colon, "that the town adopt the following resolution," colon. That's a lead, the normal lead-in to the, to the resolution. And I remind those of you who are jumping ship to please turn in your handheld devices. That's moved by Ms. Granoff, seconded by Ms. Daley, Ms. Granoff.
Good evening, Susan Granoff, Precinct 7. Warrant Article 33 is a resolution that urges the Board of Selectmen to establish a committee to study the issue of property tax relief programs for Brookline senior homeowners with modest incomes, and to make specific policy and warrant article recommendations in time for action by town meeting in November 2017. I believe this committee is needed now for several reasons. First, as we all know, Brookline homeowners are facing rapidly growing property taxes, primarily caused by the extraordinary growth in Brookline's schoolage population. Our town has already passed one override within the last two years, and it is highly likely to pass two to three, or even more overrides during the next 10 years. This will be especially burdensome for many of our senior homeowners with modest and low incomes, some of whom are already struggling to pay their property taxes. In an affluent town such as Brookline, this is often a hidden problem. Struggling seniors may be too embarrassed to talk about it openly, but the problem is real, and is only growing more urgent with each new override. Second, and compounding this problem, many senior Brookline homeowners find that they are no longer able to qualify for the Massachusetts income tax credit known as the Circuit Breaker, which they once qualified for in the past. This is because, in addition to meeting the income qualifications, currently $57,000 for a single senior and $85,000 for a married couple, the senior's home must be assessed below a specific dollar amount, which is based on a statewide average of the assessed values of all single-family residences. During the past eight years, while Brookline's residential real estate values have been increasing by about 5% to 10% a year, property values in western Massachusetts have been plummeting. As a result, since 2009, the Circuit Breaker's qualifying home valuation amount has actually been decreasing each year. In 2008, that amount was 793,000. Today, it's 693,000, $100,000 less. That means that fewer Brookline seniors, no matter how low their incomes, are now able to qualify for the Circuit Breaker income tax credit worth well over $1,000. Third, our existing programs in Brookline, although well-intentioned, are not adequate. Either they are available to only a very limited number of seniors, like the work-off program, which is open to only 30 seniors, or they have such extreme asset and income restrictions that Brookline senior homeowners can rarely qualify. A fourth reason for this committee, although it hurts to admit this, is that some other Massachusetts communities are currently offering more innovative, wider-reaching, and more generous programs than Brookline does. One example is Newton, which, like Brookline, offers a senior tax deferral program. Brookline's interest rate for this program is a fixed 5%. Newton's interest rate, which is tied to the Federal Reserve discount rate, has been at or below 1% for years. Not surprisingly, currently, there are 56 seniors in Newton's program and only seven in Brookline's. Another example is the town of Sudbury, which introduced an innovative pilot program in 2014 that generally requires no qualifying senior to pay property taxes in excess of 10% of their total income. This program has worked so well and has proven so popular, the entire town voted overwhelmingly to continue it this past March. Finally, establishing this committee is another way to help preserve Brookline's age and income diversity that is so important to our town. It's a way to provide more affordable housing in Brookline by making existing housing more affordable to residents in great need of that help. To conclude then, it is time for Brookline to act now, in advance of the additional overrides that are sure to come, to establish a committee to study this problem rationally and comprehensively, to learn from the experiences of other Massachusetts communities, and to make concrete policy recommendations, including warrant article proposals, so that we can provide additional property tax relief to our town's struggling senior homeowners with modest and low incomes. I urge you to vote favorable action on Article 33. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Daley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Nancy Daley for the Board of Selectmen. We are very aware that when you grant one group tax relief, you shift the burden to other groups. However, as Susan points out, many seniors are struggling to stay in their homes, and they receive less assistance from the state than they used to. In several of her presentations, she has mentioned some proposals that could aid lower-income seniors without resulting in a large shift to other homeowners. Therefore, the Board believes this isn't an area worth studying, and we unanimously urge favorable action on our motion on Article 33.
Thank you, Ms. Humphrey. And Mr. Carroll, would you, oh, dear, you're right.
Sitska Humphrey, Precinct 6, speaking on behalf of the advisory committee, which unanimously supports Warrant Article 33 as amended by the Selectmen, and thanks Susan Granoff for bringing us this resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Carroll?
Hi, I'm Frank Carroll, Precinct 10. I'm also co-chair of the Brookline Community Aging Network and a co-chair of the Brookline Age Friendly City Committee. The Brookline Community Aging Network supports this proposal, and thanks Susan Granoff for bringing it to us. I, you know, just want to say that over the years, the Board of Selectmen, Board of Assessors, and Gary McCabe in particular, have been very responsive to the concerns of older homeowners who are struggling to pay property taxes, and he has been highly receptive to various proposals to, to be accommodating to seniors who are, who are struggling. He, and he's, he is very supportive of this proposal, and I, I think that the fact that we are going to establish this committee is going to bring more voices to the table, and I'm hopeful that it will lead us to come up with some better solutions. I urge your support.
No, we're going to have Ms. Fraley's question, that's the last person standing. Go ahead, Ms. Fraley.
Regina Fraley, 16, I want to congratulate Susan, not just because she's on top of this in such a way that, that has shown a remarkable degree of research, but she had the wisdom to put in that it reports to the Board of Selectmen, and as the state attorney general said, that's the purpose that matters, that makes it under the open meeting law, not whether it's a hybrid committee, not whether it's Town Meeting Members, as falsely stated tonight, but the fact that it's reporting back to Selectmen for action, it must be under the open meeting law. Congratulations, Susan.
On the resolution on page 33-7, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, raise your hands. I heard a no somewhere. Mr. Franco. 163 to 1. Before we get to our last article, number 34, the, I have to correct the vote on the Article 32 main motion, the Town Clerk's abstention was not recorded. It now is, and the corrected vote is 159 in favor, 18 opposed, and nine abstentions. I also will take this opportunity to beg for volunteers, for the moderators' positions in the committee to be established under Article 30. You can send your name and, and perhaps your resume in to me at, either by email or by phone. I'd greatly appreciate volunteers. Article 34. The motion under Article 34 is on page 34-3, over to page 34-4. Moved by Mr. Goldstein and seconded by Mr. Franco, that the town adopt a resolution relating to the development of age-restricted affordable housing over the existing town-owned parking lot in Brookline Village. Mr. Winkelman and Mr. Goldstein, you have 10 minutes.
Thank you. Could I ask that you divide the time available between Ken and myself, and give me one-minute notice before my time expires?
How, how do you want to divide your time?
Equally between.
Okay.
Thank you. My name is Henry Winkelman, Precinct 13, and Town Meeting Rookie. My wife and I have lived in Brookline for over 12 years, for a decade in Precinct 7 on St. Paul Street, and now we live on Precinct 13 at the 1724 Beacon Street in Washington Square. I'm currently serving on the Selectmen's Age Friendly Cities Committee and the Commission on Disability. And while I have a strong background in architecture, I have never been a real estate developer. I stand before you tonight requesting your support for Warrant Article 34, a resolution to consider creating affordable senior housing above the town's Kent Station Street parking lot using air rights developed... Street parking lot using air rights development. Some of you might be wondering, what exactly is air rights development? Google says, quote, "Air rights are the type of property interest in real estate," referring to the space above land on the earth's surface. The idea is that you can lease or rent the space above another separate use, end quote. I'd like to quickly provide a summary of the idea's history, pardon me, over the last three years. This idea really grew out of the Brookline Senior Center and was first presented to the Beacon Delivable Community Advocacy Committee in November of two thousand thirteen. It was then presented to the HAB in two thousand fourteen, and last winter, a small group of active and concerned community members began meeting sporadically to discuss this idea. The group includes my co-petitioner, Ken Goldstein, Frank Carroll, Nancy Daly, Roger Blood, and Tom Nutt Powell. Next slide, please. I'm going to let Frank Carroll talk about the major demographic transformation that is occurring across our country, but please allow me to share a small fact that highlights the severity of the situation. In two thousand fourteen, Senator Rob Portman said that ten thousand baby boomers begin receiving Medicare and Social Security benefits every day, and this number increases every day. As you can see on the chart from the U.S. Census Department, the tidal wave of retirees is getting big, and when combined with the severe shortage of affordable housing, it seems like we're heading for a perfect storm. Here in Brookline, over forty percent of seniors have incomes under twenty thousand dollars per year. Over sixty percent of seniors renters are housing cost burden, meaning over half their money goes for the housing costs. There are twelve hundred seniors on Brookline's Housing Authority's waiting list, and affordability is needed across a broad range of incomes. Next slide, please. When I first shared this idea with Frank Carroll, he said you need to find examples of this being done successfully somewhere else. I found, for example, great examples of affordable senior housing over public parking lots in L.A., most recently was in Beverly Hills. The most similar site to our Kent Station Street parking lot is called the Clark Senior Apartments. It is in Pico-Richardson neighborhood. Next slide, please. This is from the New York, from the L.A. Times. This project is hailed by supporters as a creative solution for the problem of providing affordable senior housing in areas such as the West Side, where land is very expensive. Buildings in the air right above the city land allows for a double use of the property, cutting the costs in half, they say. Developers plan to build a four-story building of affordable housing above the street-level public parking lot, and fourteen additional parking spaces will be provided below grade for residents of the building. And you might notice in this slide, the entrance on the left top, you can see the entrance to the public parking, the parking below grade, and on the right are the pictures of the public parking at grade. Next slide, please. Oh, actually, one question. If they're doing this in L.A., why aren't we doing this in Brookline? Next slide. The internal design concepts are pretty simple. Public parking remains as you see it. We will preserve and protect the availability of parking for Brookline Village businesses and restaurants.
You have one minute.
Thank you. Pedestrians access across Station Street, Kent Street, and random places remain. Air rights would be utilized to create affordable senior housing above the parking space, and parking for residents would be placed under the public parking. There are options for the streetscape along Station Street, which we haven't really even explored, and we also have the idea of making community space in this building. Next slide, please. The goal of this project is very diverse, but the ideas need to fit into the neighborhood and the community. Neighbors and abutters will play a major role in this project. Apairance, height, mass, clearance, elevation, natural light, these are all issues that need to be examined. Last slide, please. Warrant Article Thirty-four has received support from the HAB, Council on Aging, and the Board of Selectmen, who voted unanimously to support the warrant article with minor revisions. In closing, I'd like to go back to California and quote the City of Hawthorne's Housing Elements Plan. Attention must be paid to the housing needs of older residents, who, as they age, may require smaller, more affordable housing near transportation shops and services and restaurants. We know that the town needs to do what the town needs to do, and it is not a demographic study of our plan for other strategic assets. We need more affordable senior housing, and we need it ASAP. We have a crisis building, and every day it's getting bigger. Kent Station Street offered an opportunity to address this well-documented need, and while we have a compelling need, there is no compelling reason to delay. In closing, warrant Article Thirty-four is a resolution, not a threat from developers. This is an idea that has grown out of the town. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Mr. Goldstein, you have four minutes.
Four minutes, oh my God. I think there's one more slide there. Hi, everybody, Ken Goldstein, Precinct Thirteen. I'm here to speak about the process and to address some concerns that have been made, and I'm going to read really fast. The process is that there really is no prescribed process. We, Henry, Frank Carroll, Roger Blood, Nancy Daly, and I got together as a group. We appointed only ourselves. We have discussed this between ourselves and have included other decision-makers and stakeholders in the town. We've outreach to town meeting members in the adjacent precincts and held two public meetings at the VFW Hall, the first in August of this year, prior to the warrant being published. No one, by the way, has any personal stake in the outcome here. As a practical matter, though, this is only the beginning of the public process here tonight. Step one is letting our leaders know that senior housing on this site is an idea that warrants pursuing, that's our word, or development, that's the Selectmen's word. We're fine with either of those. We envision the public process to be as follows. First, obtain this mandate from town meeting. Second, the Board of Selectmen will, in the coming weeks, charge an oversight committee. We'll make suggestions if our suggestions are wanted. Third, the oversight committee will study the matter, including public hearings. Fourth, the oversight committee will report back to the Board of Selectmen. Fifth, if further action is warranted, the Board of Selectmen will authorize the issuance of an RFP. That RFP would detail all of the criteria that would equate to an acceptable proposal. Sixth, if the RFP produces a viable proposal, then an MOU would be hopefully entered into. Performance under the MOU would necessarily be subject to... Seven, further approval by a two-thirds majority of town meeting, as any permanent disposition of land requires town meeting approval. Although there's widespread support for the idea of affordable senior housing, excuse me, some concerns have been raised. How do we know this site is worthy? The ad hoc working group sees this as a viable site due to the proximity to transportation, proximity to medical services, proximity to government services, plus the size of this site, which is Goldilocks, neither too high, too small, or too large, and also the fact that the change in grade between Kent Street and Station Street could prove advantageous in terms of maintaining current parking and also possibly adding more parking or possibly other uses, always a concern. It's not just us, though, that thinks this is a good site. I think there's one more slide there. There it is. The town recently completed a housing production plan, which specifically suggests that the town look to encourage, I quote, "new housing on municipally-owned parcels, such as the municipally-owned parcel lot in Brookline Village situated between Kent and Station Street." And as an aside, if we ever are to defeat a forty-B, it's a necessity that the town have a housing production plan in place and that they're actively pursuing it. This could actually help defeat a forty-B in the future. Some members of the advisory committee did not support this warrant article because the town is trying to come up with a strategic asset plan that will evaluate all town-owned real estate.
One minute.
One minute. I'll go quick. This process of the strategic asset plan has been two years in the making, and it could be two more years before we have a digested work product ready to consider. The senior housing problem is now. There are fourteen hundred people on the waiting list for senior housing, and a strategic asset plan was not meant to be a moratorium on projects of this nature. I'm going to conclude. I know that some neighbors are prejudging this idea. They've already mobilized against it. They think that some of their opposition is based on scare tactics, that the project has already been okayed, and if this warrant article passes, there won't be an opportunity to oppose it. Nothing could be further from the truth. Warrant Article Thirty-four is a first step on what will be a long and open public process, a process that will hopefully result in a community that can remain age and income diverse by a process that we determine and by criteria that we control. Thank you, and I thank you for your support.
Now, Mr. Levy and Mr. Vitolo, we have a depressingly long list of speakers. We won't get to comments from the microphones for at least another twenty or twenty-five minutes.
I'll sit here.
At which time, it will be twenty, ten minutes of eleven. But I'll put you first on the list if we reach comments from the mics.
Mariah Obrega, Precinct Four, speaking on behalf of the majority of advisory committee in recommending no action on Article Thirty-four. It's hard to be against something as laudable as a proposal for senior housing. However, this article has three fundamental flaws. First, the article tries to go around town decision-making processes. One of the recommendations of the two thousand fourteen override study committee was to develop a strategic asset plan for the town that would evaluate all town-owned parcels as well as provide a list of priorities for potential redevelopment. Much of the opposition from advisory was on this point. The feeling is, we need to think big picture instead of picking assets off one by one. Specifically, advisory noted that the Coolidge Corner Library's potential move to the Center Street Lot was tabled pending completion of the strategic asset plan, so allowing this to go forward is inconsistent. Alison Steinfeld, the Director of Planning and Community Development, has also stated her opposition to the article at this time for similar reasons. Now that the ninth school site selection is over, the Planning and Community Development Department is developing an RFP for the strategic asset plan, so that development of the plan can start in early two thousand seventeen and be complete by the end of this fiscal year. Second, even if we skip the strategic asset plan process for this site, it is unclear that this site is truly the best site for the stated goal. What about the lot just across Kent Street, which is bigger and theoretically could accommodate even more senior housing? We have heard that the Station Street Lot is better than Kent because EdeB has said that the Kent Street Lot could be developed commercially in the future. Okay, but commercial development is one priority of the town, as is senior housing. Again, we really need the strategic asset plan and to prioritize all of these uses, not have any one stakeholder determine what goes where. The petitioners have also stated that the Station Street Lot is best because of the ability to add a new below-ground parking level that could be used for commercial parking for Brookline Village. This has nothing to do with increasing affordable senior housing. Selecting this site because of the ability to add more parking at a time when auto technology is advancing quickly and parking itself may soon be obsolete, and in what the resolution itself calls a transit-rich neighborhood, is contradictory. Third, neighbors feel excluded from much of the process. You've surely seen emails and flyers expressing their concerns, and we'll hear tonight from one neighborhood representative. Many of the town meeting members who represent them have similar concerns. How big is this building going to be? How will construction and steady-state use affect traffic, particularly on Station Street, which already hosts numerous medical area shuttles and sees traffic backed up routinely for blocks during rush hour? What will the impact of a second construction zone within yards of the Brookline Place work be? This isn't a case of NIMBY gone wild. These same abutters and TMMs look at the lot across Kent Street as possibly a better option, right in their neighborhood, and are excited to discuss it further. Some people have said that the housing production plan was the public process for this site and that abutters should have attended those meetings. That's simply unfair and incorrect. The housing production plan was a town-wide process, not site-specific. There was no formal notification process that happens when a site is under discussion. The production plan does not even say that this is the best lot. It only identifies this lot as an example of town-owned lots. Some people have also said that this is a non-binding resolution, implying it is meaningless. We have all seen how, a year or two later, resolutions are dragged back out as the will of town meeting, especially on matters immediately before the town, so we feel this should be treated very seriously. Proponents say there will be plenty of opportunities to figure all of this out, not if we prematurely vote to focus on one site, thus excluding all others from consideration at this time. To summarize, advisory voted no action because of three issues: lack of adherence to process, uncertainty about the validity of the site, and legitimate abutter and TMM concerns. In conclusion, I note that advisory initially voted favorable action on an amended resolution that would have asked that all of the town-owned parking lots in North Brookline be considered for senior housing, and urged that the strategic asset plan be taken into account. These amendments were ruled out of scope, but if you vote no action tonight, a resolution with a similarly expanded scope could be brought to town meeting for the spring to be voted on in parallel to the completion of the strategic asset plan, so that next steps to systemically tackle affordable senior housing in North Brookline can be addressed in the appropriate way. On behalf of the majority of advisory, I urge you to vote no action on Article Thirty-four. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we hear from Mr. Sandman, I have one more vote to correct. On Article Twenty-five, the final vote, an adjustment of one vote, was thirty-six in favor, one hundred forty-seven against, and nine abstentions. And all subsequent speakers will have three minutes.
Mike Sandman, Precinct Three, speaking for a large minority of the advisory committee, which voted nine to ten against favorable action on this. Article Thirty-four asks the Selectmen to issue a request for proposal to test the petitioner's concept. It doesn't authorize a project. The RFP would invite developers, including developers of nonprofit housing, to submit ideas for building affordable senior housing above a parking lot. If the town received a compelling proposal and wanted to move ahead, it would lease the air rights and require that the housing be affordable permanently. Any such project would run the usual gauntlet of review by various boards, by neighbors, by the Selectmen, and ultimately by town meeting. There's a growing need for affordable senior housing. No one questions that. We've heard a lot about it tonight. The question is about the concept and the site. There are really three kinds of objections to this resolution. Category one, lack of notice. The petitioners did talk with Precinct Four and other town meeting members in August, and several immediate neighbors attended the September twentieth advisory subcommittee hearing on Article Thirty-four. So the word was out to some extent, but still, many neighbors did indeed learn about the article only in the last couple of weeks. My drill sergeant in the Army said, "There's always ten percent that don't get the word." In this case, the percentage seems to be reversed. Even though they're private citizens, the petitioners should have done more outreach earlier, but that doesn't invalidate the concept. Objection category two, we don't know if the concept is feasible. Exactly. Finding that out is what Article Thirty-four is about. I, too, have doubts about whether an economically viable building can be built and still allow enough light to reach the windows of the adjacent buildings. How high would that building have to be? Can the public parking spaces be retained? If we don't ask for proposals and study the site, we won't ever know. The cost of finding out will be borne by developers who respond. There's no cost to the town with one exception. Which brings us to objection category three, staff time. The advisory committee heard that planning staff is overwhelmed by forty-B proposals, but the article doesn't set a timeline for developing an RFP. It just asks that the follow-up to the RFP be put on the admittedly long list of tasks in front of the planning department. When I was nineteen to twenty, I called a friend on a Saturday afternoon and asked if she wanted to go to a movie that night. She refused. "I'd love to go with you, but you've asked me too late." On principle, no. I was devastated for a few seconds. I went with somebody else. What does that have to do with Article Thirty-four? The three arguments against the article are not enough notice, feasibility is uncertain, staff's too busy. You didn't ask me for a date soon enough. I haven't seen a movie review, so I'm not a hundred percent sure this movie will be good, and I would have to wash my hair. Ladies and gentlemen, we don't know if this movie's going to be good, but someone else is buying the tickets. All we have to do is eat the popcorn. Please vote favorable action.
Hello, it's on.
Go ahead. Speaking to the microphones.
My name is Liz Linder, thirty-one Station Street, Precinct Four. I'm an abutter and business owner in the neighborhood. First slide, please. I moved to Brookline Village in two thousand three, drawn to the industrial feel of Station Street with its trees, light, and air. Next slide, please. I fell for the granite wall with steps urban and nostalgic and the creative commerce housed in old brick buildings. Next slide, please. I feel strongly about the culture of this community. Abutting neighbors responded emphatically when they were invited to a meeting just last week, where they learned for the first time, for the most part, a large and vaguely-defined construction project threatening to... large and vaguely defined construction project threatening to change the future or heart of the village, as we all love. This unique location is already beginning to shift under heavy development. Between Hotels, Brookline Place, and the dispensary, we're in danger of becoming an extension of the medical district. A lot of you have suggested approving Article 34 is just the beginning of, is not the beginning of anything, it's just exploratory talk, but it talks about building, a building on this specific site, the only site under consideration. I recognize there's no proposal yet. However, if the vote is yes tonight, outside interests will invest and the community voice will be diminished, particularly in light of strong affordable housing initiatives. If this warrant article included one sentence to review other appropriate town-owned lots, or the closest neighbors have been invited, invited to the table earlier, this would be a different conversation and we would all feel better about any outcome. The petitioners mentioned having sought advice from a member of the Board of the Brookline Improvement Coalition, and according to reports of selectmen and Advisory Committee, have already identified BIC as a preferred developer. The fact that they had already identified a preferred developer before ever consulting the nearest neighbors demonstrates how, under the pressure of a rapid pace, the interests of the neighbors might get overlooked. Given this, it's not hard to imagine what the proposal would look like. A large-scale development occupying as much of the lot is feasible. Let's be straight. This warrant wouldn't be as controversial with neighbors if we were involved earlier or multiple lots were considered. To be clear, Kent and Station is the target lot. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. It is not Kenton Webster, an adjacent lot which, given its surroundings, is also, also worth exploring. Additionally, congestion, ongoing construction, and lack of nearby groceries beg the question, is this really the best lot? Since hearing that if approved, Article 34 could be fast-tracked, we put together a website and petition, and in short time, over 200 neighbors have shown through signatures and comments how the current configuration is highly functional and as is land usage is much appreciated. There is no dispute about the need for affordable senior housing. We would like to see equal consideration for the neighborhood incorporated into the text of this article, along with the benefits it proposes, and ask that the petitioners resubmit with language as previously recommended by the Advisory Committee. Brookline is not LA. I urge you to vote no action on Article 34, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Franco?
Ben Franco for a unanimous Board of Selectmen. I'll begin by making a clarification. I think I heard a previous speaker say that the planning director had taken a position on this article. To my knowledge, the planning director has not taken a position contrary to the Board of Selectmen's policy direction on this article. To state the obvious, this article has generated robust conversation, and much of that conversation has been productive. But recently, there have been some statements that have centered on some things which, which are months, if not years away. And having said that, I am satisfied that previous speakers have made clear what this resolution, this non-binding resolution says. First, that it's non-binding, that it pertains to senior affordable housing, and air rights development, and that previous attempts to expand the scope of the resolution were ruled beyond the, the scope of the, the original submitted warrant article. So I will close by talking a bit about the path forward. Should warrant Article 34 pass, the Board expects a significant amount of process to occur. The Board expects a committee to be convened that will include representation from various boards, commissions, neighborhoods, constituencies interested in the project, and that the committee will have the appropriate resources made available to it to get to the bottom of whether the Kenton Station Street Lot is the right place to do a development of this type, and that those resources will most likely come in the form of a hired consultant based on the volume of work that our, our planning staff has currently. Should the article, in, in its words, determine that a, a suitable proposal does emerge from that process, the town is not obligated to do anything. The, and, and we won't proceed if that, if that, if that proposal is deemed to be infeasible or doesn't work for, for Brookline. Returning again to the, the prospect that a feasible, advisable, desired development proposal should, should emerge, it's, as you've heard earlier from Mr. Goldstein, that, that conversation will return to town meeting where a vote will be taken on whether to proceed. And I stand before you, I will conclude by saying that a unanimous Board of Selectmen is willing to have that conversation and to see where this takes us and where it leads.
Thank you, Mr. Blood.
Roger Blood, Chair, current Chair of the Brookline Housing Advisory Board. The Housing Advisory Board had two public meetings during September and October on Article 34, the second of which was a public hearing, and the result of which was a unanimous vote favoring town meeting, considering and passing approving Article 34. I would, I want to, depart from my intended remarks about the housing production plan and really want to share with you a couple of things in regard to what you've already heard. I'm quite comfortable in saying that neither I nor the Housing Advisory Board would have supported this article, in fact actively would oppose it, had there been any sense that there was a preferred developer, any preferred developer. This is not what this article is about. And I think that's important because one of the speakers mentioned a very large number of signatories opposing this article, which was based on the posting of a website, which, if any of you have seen it, it strongly suggests that this article involves a developer and a project that's already been identified to that extent. It, it most definitely has not. So, to some extent, while I'm very sympathetic with the concerns of the neighbors, I think that the basis on which these signatures were gathered is somewhat, quite at variance with the article as it was conceived, and as certainly as the Housing Advisory Board dealt with it. Another question, or issue that's been raised that I think is important, and it's a fair question about why this site, why not the others? The housing production plan did say that municipal parking lots in general met the site suitability criteria as, as generated with a lot of public process, were, were good for development of senior affordable housing. The reason that this site is particularly good compared with the others, and I know Henry Winkelman in particular took a longer look and detailed look at this, you've heard two examples of it in this discussion tonight, and it's not that, that other sites are not suitable for affordable housing. The question is, what are the, these parking lots alternatively potentially suitable for? And there are going to be considerations in the strategic asset plan, that's what it's all about. What are the, what are the range of possibilities for these sites? And in the case of parking lots, the air rights above those sites?
Thirty seconds.
You heard about the Coolidge Corner Parking Lot and the lot across the street on Kent Street, and, and tonight, they were presented in terms of alternative desires or claims or possible uses for those sites. That's not been the case with the Kent Street Parking Lot, and the, even the folks that are opposing or questioning this article haven't really spoken to alternatives that they think would be good, other than possibly nothing. This article does not accelerate or bypass any public process. There's going to be plenty of that, and it does not prescribe or mandate any specific action or any specific timeline.
Please conclude, sir.
All the, all the petitioners are asking is that the need is acknowledged by town meeting for senior affordable housing, and that you encourage through this article for the town to begin doing something to address this need, and to begin an extended process of evaluating this particular highly suitable location.
I don't hear you concluding, Mr. Blood.
In conclusion, this is a town-owned asset. It's opposite from the 40Bs, and we ask that you please support this initial step. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carroll?
Frank Carroll again, Precinct 10, and representing the Brookline Community Aging Network, and the Age Friendly City Committee. In a, in a certain sense, the, the, the public process which led, has led to our being here this evening to discuss this issue began in April 2013. It's one of the first activities of the, the Brookline Age Friendly City Initiative, when the Department of Planning and Community Development, in conjunction with the Age Friendly City Initiative, held a public forum on need for senior housing. And that forum kind of really, I focused on the extent, extent of need for, for senior housing, particularly affordable senior housing, and then talked about various options to develop it. And Henry Winkelman very quickly rattled through some, some numbers. I, I want to spend just a little bit more time focusing on their, on their implications. We have a major problem of, of shortage of affordable season, senior housing now. Half of our seniors are renters, and of them, 60%, are paying more than they can afford for housing. And we have ahead of us the aging of the baby boomers. The, the baby boomers are growing at a rate of 40% in the past decade. So, the problems that we have now are going to be magnified. We estimate that if Brookline were serious about addressing this problem, it would be thinking about creating in the order of 2,000 affordable units for seniors. That would mean, over a period of a decade or two, developing 40 projects with about 50 units each. So, yes, this is a good place to start. Yes, there are other town lots. Over time, we should look at them. We, we should be thinking about many initiatives of this time, of this kind. Seniors thrive in North Brookline, in an environment that's walkable. This site fits that bill, among other things that had been mentioned earlier.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Carroll.
I urge your support. Thank you.
Mary Leece, and Rita McNally, would you please come forward, if you're present?
Mary Leece, Precinct Six. I have a long history of advocating for affordable housing, going back to the 1970s in Boston, and 10 to 15 years here in Brookline. I live a block away from the Station Street Lot. When I heard the recommendation to wait until the town completed strategic asset plan, it seemed to make sense. Others suggested that a new warrant article be submitted to evaluate all parking lots for senior housing. I now see problems with both ideas. First, it makes little sense for two overlapping studies to run simultaneously. Second, we already know that not all parking lots lend themselves to senior affordable housing. I, for one, would love to see a solar panel roof over a parking lot. Third, these suggestions overlook the fact that a town-wide series of well-attended public meetings led to the town's housing production plan that evaluated potential sites and singled out Station Street. I believe it would be imprudent to ignore this. And finally, if in fact the strategic asset plan contradicts the housing production plan, guess what would happen? Looking at the Station Street Lot for senior housing would likely come to a screeching halt. It's discouraging when we pledge commitment to affordable housing and then drag our feet without a serious reason. This is a tiny first step. Slowing it down makes our commitment seem like lip service. I want to reassure my neighbors who have spread misleading statements about this resolution, which unnecessarily scared people. With a list of off-the-wall bullet points, they launched a website petition, put cards in our mailboxes, and sent emails to neighbors and town meeting members.
One minute.
Ironically, their fears were generated by recently-held courtesy meetings to inform them about this idea. Instead of feeling informed, they incorrectly concluded that they had been left out of a much farther along process. So they asked detailed questions to which there are no answers because there is no developer and no, no development proposal. They charged there had been no feasibility study. Of course not. Who would do a feasibility study on a town-owned site without some show of town interest?
Thirty seconds.
Which Article 34 provides. We are, unfortunately, in my view, years away from anything happening at this site. When that time comes, there will be ample public participation. Meanwhile, please don't further slow down this snail-like pace. Please support Article 34. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McNally. And you can stand up now, Mr. Levy, if you wish.
Rita McNally, Town E member, Precinct Two, a member of the Housing Advisory Board, and the BIC organization, which works on affordable housing as well, and a member of the PACS Board. Many of you received in the mail the PACS flyer that explains PACS' position on various articles, and you'll find for Article 34 that they have endorsed it. And they, one of the reasons that they cite for endorsing it is because it's town-owned property that will remain town-owned, and that gives it a, a good plug, as far as I'm concerned. On the Housing Advisory Board, I'm supposedly representing people who rent, people throughout the town, low-income people. And I support this finding of this spot. First of all, it's so close to the transportation, and when you get to be in the age range that I'm in, I'm 83, I'm one of the elders, and as I'm walking around here, I'm looking at all the white hair in the audience. So many of you are feeling the age dependency kinds of feelings that I do. I'd love to see this happening. I'm constantly hearing around town and in the various committees that are being held about thinking outside the box. I want more than that. I want people to get out of the box and start really looking around our town. What belongs to us in the town? Did you say something, Mr. Moderator? Or am I hearing things?
Nope, you're hearing things.
And I know, I know, it means it's time to go to Betty Bar. I hope you'll take deep consideration. We're not going to fool around with the people within the community. We understand their concerns, and my concerns have always been with the community people, and hearing your voices and understanding your needs, but I know we can carry on that conversation, and we'll keep in touch with you to let you know when the meetings are. Maybe some of you will decide to run for town meeting. It's a good start, anyway. All right, well, good night to you all, and please vote on this positively.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. You've been very patient.
My name is Mark Levy, Town E member, Precinct Seven, and I was on the Affordable Housing Committee that recommended the creation of the Housing Advisory Board and inclusionary zoning. And I, from my perspective, there are two problems with this article. One is that it is, happens to be a spot right next to the Village Way Pearl Street, already a senior housing, and a low-income housing. And one of the hallmarks of what we tried to do years ago on the Youth Housing Advisory Committee was to get across the point that we don't want to create districts of low-income housing, which are isolated and segregated from the rest of the community. And I think that's one, strike one against this proposal. Strike two is that it's, the proposal, as it reads, says mixed-income housing. And mixed-income housing is a term of art that can mean anything from 100% low and moderate income housing to 100%, or 90% market-rate housing with a couple of units in it that are low and moderate income. are low and moderate income. I raise these points not to argue against this article, I in fact support this article, but I do want to bring this attention to the selection of the Town, that we need to have more than just budding housing projects for elderly, low-income housing, and it has to be, in my opinion, dedicated to low and moderate income housing and not a mixed use which includes upper-moderate and market-rate housing if that's at all economically feasible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vitolo.
Tommy Vitolo, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. Perhaps Mr. Goldstein was speaking faster than I could listen. I have a question, and that is, is there any way possible that, should we vote yes on this warrant article, that a project could go through without a second vote by this body at some future date? Is that even conceivable?
The answer is no.
Thank you.
Mr. Richmond?
Clint Richmond, Precinct 6, also a near, you know, we're the precinct across the street from this project. I guess I have some concerns about this and that town property's pretty scarce and this does seem to smack of spot zoning. I know there are concerns about increasing in density in this neighborhood. I think there are some alternative uses that we should think about. It could be combined with the Kent-Webster property across the street, it's a potential school site. So, I don't know that we should be rushing into this. And I think there's some, I don't know what the tax implications are, I don't know if this would be limited to nonprofit developers, or so there's some, you know, I mean, we all, again, no one is against senior housing, but we don't have very many town lots to consider and they seem to be disappearing rapidly.
And Ms. Benka for our swan song.
Carla Benka, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13. There have been a couple of references to the Strategic Asset Plan, and I was wondering if we could have a very quick update from a representative from the Planning Department about that.
The answer is no. Well, okay. I mean, it's really outside the scope of this discussion, but since town meeting is reveling in its proceedings here, we'll hear from Ms. Bruton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Cara Bruton. I'm the Economic Development Director for the Town of Brookline. To answer Carla's question, the Strategic Asset Plan, there are background materials online, you can Google them tonight. We are adding December 1st, we're posting all of the department head narratives that we've been interviewing them about future needs, their understanding of our physical assets, and potential collaborations and efficiencies that we might see working together related to these physical assets. Our next Planning Board meeting is December 7th, if you'd like to join us, about the Strategic Asset Plan. As Mariah noted earlier, we will be launching the RFP by the end of the calendar year and completing the work in June. In the meantime, please look out for a map-based online tool which we've been working on with GIS that we're finalizing now and will be launching probably in December. That is one small piece that we anticipate using for public process and will make it significantly easier for people to access information, make, and read each other's public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion on page 34-3, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
We'll have an electronic vote to... Now, this is an electronic vote to check the tally, Mr. Carroll. If you want a recorded vote, okay. This is just a vote to check the tally. Okay, if there are 35 people who want a recorded vote, we'll have one. And let's end town meeting with a recorded vote. Main motion, Article 34. This is a recorded vote on the motion on page 34-3. It's on page 34-3, it's Selectmen's motion. That motion carries by a vote of 123 in favor, 30 opposed, and 7 abstentions. That concludes the business of this town meeting, and I will entertain a motion to dissolve. Is there a second? Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. I declare town meeting dissolved. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.